Welcome back, commissioners. Madam Chair, we have a quorum alive. I will keep my eye out for Commissioner Phi and Commissioner Rogers. And Commissioner Angie will be joining shortly.
Terrific. Thank you, Clerk Moss. Welcome, everyone, to the afternoon portion of the Washington County Board of Commissioners' work session. We started our work session this morning with an executive session and then got through board communication and just a couple of necessary leadership communication items. We're going to come back to leadership communication at the end of the meeting. So we'll proceed then with our next work session topic, which is approval of the 2022 federal and state legislative agendas. So I'd like to welcome the team. As we all have our screens changed. Who would like to kick us off with this topic?
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. I will be happy to kick us off. I am Paige Spence for the Public Record, GR manager, and I am here with my colleague Erin Doyle on behalf of our Government Relations Team and pleased to be joined by Tracy Rainey on behalf of Clean Water Services. Our fearless leader Jigjit today has welcomed his newborn son as of at least Sunday and is on leave. And Erin and I have been thrilled to congratulate him. So Jigjit is not going to be joining us today and hopefully is not even listening and enjoying the time with his family. And Erin and Tracy and I are happy to get started without further ado. Kevin, if you could advance to the next slide, please. Thank you. So we have three items to discuss with your board this afternoon, the first being the three 2022 legislative agendas. So that's the county's federal guiding principles, the county's state legislative agenda, and Clean Water Services' federal and state legislative agendas. As you'll recall, we have presented these to your board on November 7th, and we've made just a couple minor adjustments based on what we've heard from you in that conversation and in our one-on-one. But most of the content should look very familiar to you from November 7th. And as a reminder, your board is scheduled to formally adopt these agendas at your board meeting next Tuesday, December 14th. I do want to note for the beginning of this presentation that we don't have the final agenda PDFs back yet as graphics and updated census data are the input by the county's excellent graphic designer. Thanks for your work, Sherry Jurals. But we assure your board that those documents will reflect these changes and will send them to you for your review as soon as we have them available, and of course, we'll include them in the board packet for the 14th. The second item we will discuss today are short February state legislative session emerging themes. And then finally, to re-ground ourselves, especially the GR team, because these dates will approach faster than we realize, a quick review of the legislative timeline. So with that, unless there are questions, we can go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. Thank you, Kevin. So first, we're going to discuss the Washington County federal agenda, and there are no updates since the November 7th presentation. The next two slides are just a reminder about the updates we shared last month we've made to the 2022 federal guiding principles. And finally, a reminder that for the federal agenda, we only have guiding principles and not concrete priorities so as to provide more flexibility in all policy conversations for the GR team and for our DC-based lobbying firm at the federal level. And as an additional reminder, just the overall purpose of these legislative agendas is to guide your GR team, our federal lobby team, and county departments on responding to legislative proposals and other policy conversations. For example, they assist GR with conversations around non-priority items for departments as they work with their own associations, and also for county council to determine the possibility of participating in Amicus briefs related to these policy areas. So without further ado, next slide, please. Thank you. So these are here as a reminder of the changes that we made before the November 7th presentation. Again, no changes, but just to cover them again. The first guiding principle is around ongoing public health funding for COVID-19. The second change we made, because in 2021, our Health and Human Services principle reflected the possibility of rollbacks to the Affordable Care Act, and that's no longer on the table at the moment. And then for number three, we added homeownership at the request of Commissioner Phi. Next slide, please. And I'll turn it over to Erin to cover these two.
Good afternoon, Board. Erin Doyle here, covering for myself and for Jigjit's portfolio. So if you ask me hard questions about that, I will get back to you when I actually have an answer. But as Paige stated, there are no changes since November. So these two policy changes or principle changes reflect the changing and ongoing needs of the county in addressing. The first one removes the need to work on a large investment in from the federal government in transportation infrastructure, as that has been accomplished. Yay. We're now trying to figure out how to access and spend all that money, which will be an ongoing conversation for the next five years. But where there are opportunity to see further investment, particularly in the large projects we have coming through Oregon and the region, we wanted to have VSA positioned to take advantage of those conversations and know the direction we would like to head at the county. And the second one here, which falls more into Jigjit's portfolio, is related to the county's ability to be good stewards of the local revenue sources that we have to refinance when bond bonding markets look better for us and also make sure that our revenue opportunities aren't artificially capped as we go through further looks at legislative efforts at the federal level. So with that, that is the end of the presentation we have on the federal agenda updates. Again, reflecting no change from our November conversation, but I'm happy, we are happy to answer any questions if they exist at this time related to the federal agenda. None. Next slide, please, and I'll turn it back to Paige.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, so for the state agenda, we can actually go ahead and advance to the next slide. Thanks, Kevin. All right, so as Erin mentioned, your board saw these bullet points in November as well. This is all germane to supporting equitable community recovery from the ongoing COVID-19 impacts. The only bullet that has changed since the November 7th presentation is the fifth one about supporting homeless residents. And that is more to more comprehensively call out both short and long-term solutions. So everything else remains the same. And again, while this slide represents the state priority around recovering from COVID-19 and continuing to respond to COVID-19, because let me be clear on that suggesting that it's over. We, there could easily be federal overlays here as well. So we will consult with Vance Glick Associates, our federal lobby team, given that no one really knows what the virus will do. And so many of the needs on this slide may also be addressed at the federal level, so just an FYI there. But moving to the state session, so under this omnibus priority of continuing to support our communities' acute needs exacerbated by COVID-19, GR is not bringing any bills forward individually on behalf of Washington County under this priority. Rather, we are working in close coordination with the Association of Counties as well as our statewide housing and Health and Human Services associations to support their legislation or respond with any concerns to bills, of course, crafted by other advocacy groups and legislators. And I know you can see these bullets on your screen, so you can see broadly that should your board adopt this agenda, GR will be asking the legislature that COVID-19 recovery and response should be in furtherance of closing equity gaps, growing the behavioral health workforce, managing public health, housing stability, homeless safety nets, economic recovery, which I'll be partnering with Erin on, and childcare. And on public health, I do want to remind your board, yes, Chair Harrington.
I'll ask my question before you move on to the next slide, if that's okay.
Absolutely, yes. I was just going to note that on public health, just a quick reminder for your board that while government relations may have dollars to bring home from the state in this short session, the agency's budgets for the next biennium, where there will be, by and large, opportunities to restructure our public health financing and increase financing, will be in 2023 as the agency budgets are set then. And so if appropriate, at that time in 2023, the legislature may be asked by government relations and our partners to fold long-term COVID-19 work into public health modernization, because we expect we will need to be responding to this virus over a multi-year period. And so rather than influxes of emergency funding that come here and then come there, we'll need stable programmatic funding to respond to COVID-19 cases in Washington County as our public health experts do with other infectious diseases. So that's just a reminder that we will be actively working on COVID-19 public health funding this session, but it's also sort of a conversation starter for 2023. Chair Harrington, please feel free to ask a question.
Thank you. This, what I'm about to ask about may or may not affect the legislative agenda for this category, because it seems to be coming on fast, and I'm not even sure what conversations, you know, the source of the conversation. But it goes to the current state indoor mask mandate. And hearing just last night that apparently the state now understands that the executive order by which Governor Brown put that in place has been extended the maximum number of times and could, and it's on track to expire the end of February, and that the legislature in the short session may be, may, let me emphasize underscore exclamation point that, may be in a situation of entertaining a bill to put forward a indoor mask mandate. And that in order for them to repeal it, repealing it would be a separate effort. So the word permanent has been thrown into the mix. So I would ask Ms. Angie if our government relations team, between now and before the short session starts, if they could fill us in on on more concrete information about really what's real. I don't know what is real and what is just inference. What I want to make sure we're prepared for is if any members of our delegation come to Washington County and ask for input, that this board had, has had the appropriate opportunity to shape and determine that input per our public health authority. I don't want us chasing at windmills, that's for sure. So I just thought right now would be the opportune time to raise that information need and to ask if staff can at least explore it a little bit and help us out as the Board of Commissioners. Thank you. I'm seeing head nods, so I'll take that as a yes. I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely, Chair Harrington. You know, there, I think there's going to be rulemaking for permanent rules that are underway from the Oregon Health Authority. And so I will let, I will let myself do some research in concert with the Oregon Health Authority and our partners to see, as you said, kind of really what is going on, because I've heard a few things about bills and rulemaking as well. So on the legislative side of things and kind of what we expect maybe coming and what vehicle and what form and what time, I'll do that legwork and I'll be sharing that with our Health and Human Services leadership staff as well as Ms. Angie, so that we can have that conversation and try to make some good informed decisions. So thank you for that comment.
Let me be clear, let me be clear. I'm not asking that we make a decision, right, if it's somebody else's decisions. But I want to make sure we on the board have the opportunity of being informed as to what's going on. Thank you for mentioning that it's the Oregon Health Authority that is considering permanent rules. That's more than I understood last night. Woo-hoo. Thanks.
Well, and it could be a both-either situation, right? So, but yes, thank you very much. And your comments, I think we're all learning at the same time. And so, yes, more research to do, and we will come back to your board with more information as it becomes available, of course. And I'll make sure to work with Ms. Angie to do that. So thank you. And with that, I think we can go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. Thank you for your comments, Chair Harrington. Wonderful. Okay, so for state guiding principles, as your board will recall, aside from our concrete priorities in the state session, we also have these guiding principles so that government relations can be nimble and advocate when appropriate for or against topics that are not squarely on the current here legislative agenda. So the principles this year haven't really changed substantively, substantively, as you'll recall, we brought these to you in November. The one change that is most significant is that, I'll just admit, I was new. And so in our 2021 legislative agenda, we had had five guiding principles under HHS and three under Housing and Homelessness. And so I moved permanent supportive housing from HHS over to housing. So now each of those departments has four, so it was just a move, not a significant substantive change. And then additionally, Chair Harrington, government relations have heard your request to add long-term public health funding to these principles, which we had done, and Commissioner Phi's request to embed homeownership, which we have done as well. Next slide, please. Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Erin, who is sitting in for Jigjit, but I see your hand, Chair Harrington.
Commissioner Willie has a comment or question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. You didn't appear on my screen.
That's okay. So back on that, that slide that we just moved from with the Health and Human Services and Housing and Homelessness. Why, why don't we include the bullet point from equitable community recovery in regards to support homeless residents with short term? Why don't we include that bullet point with the Housing and Homelessness? So, so at least we've got the emphasis of housing and homelessness kind of under one title rather than in two different places.
Paige, you're muted.
I certainly apologize. Kevin, would you kindly move us back to the previous slides? We can all look at it together. Thank you. So Commissioner Willie, you're referring to bullet point four around maintaining housing stability and bullet point five around supporting homeless residents? No?
Primarily five. Since that is specifically related to homeless residents and and it's, it's a little bit, it's almost a little bit redundant, but not exactly. But if we could just come, I mean, again, this is all just kind of semantic stuff, so I, I really don't care. It's just I, I noticed we got Housing and Homelessness in two different places and that we should combine the two of them together. So, yeah, it's not a big deal to me, but I just, just an observation.
Commissioner Willie and Paige, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in here. I think the, the difference here is between the agenda priorities, which are what are reflected on this page. So these are the ones that change from year to year, and this is specific to the COVID recovery and addressing the issues of homelessness that have been more profoundly brought forward and having to help the homeless community, whereas the, the guiding principles don't change very often and therefore are seated in broader statements of what we're looking for. I think it's, we could be amenable to moving that support homeless residents with short and long-term solutions, including temporary housing, permanent housing, and resources for daily life. As a guiding principle, if that's what this board would prefer us to do, we have time to do that before you formally adopt these come December 14th, that would be a conversation for you as a board to have with us now.
Well, I guess I don't, I don't ever see this dropping off the page. So we'll, at some point in time, we'll move it from COVID-19 impacts down to guiding principles. That's, that's my guess.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Willie. Yeah, I think as Erin said, it's, it's important to have Housing and Homelessness on the guiding principles on an ongoing basis. And this session, given that we know, for example, the special session that's coming up in December 13th around on preventing evictions, we know that homelessness and COVID-19 are, you know, distinct issues that need to be worked on together and through homelessness, rather through the lens of COVID-19. For example, the way that the county had purchased buildings to do non-congregate sheltering and respite services for people experiencing homelessness who were diagnosed or symptomatic with COVID-19. So the intent here is to have that COVID-specific, you know, line of policy conversation and funding. And then also then on the guiding principle side to have Housing and Homelessness as an ongoing issue of concern for the county more writ large. So if that feels okay to the rest of the board, my recommendation would be to leave it as it is. But if there are other questions or comments around this issue, I'm happy to address those either today or between now and the 14th.
Not a big deal, just an observation on my part. I'm fine with the way it is.
Okay. Thank you very much for raising it, Commissioner Willie. Kevin, thank you again, and we'll go back to Jigjit, who today will actually be represented by Erin. So Erin, please go right ahead.
Thank you, Paige. This slide has not changed since the November presentation, nor has the proposed priority item. As you're aware, we continue to face issues as far as funding goes for our public safety and justice programs. And this 2022 session is not likely to see a massive budget uptick in all areas, but we will be working with our fellow counties on shoring up funding for the county law libraries program as well as the juvenile conciliation services. What is different between the 2021 work on those two particular issues and the statement of the principles are the priorities for 2022 is an increased recognition that part of justice is a comprehensive set of supporting services that lead to restorative justice in a full and accessible justice system for all participants within it. That therefore those support public safety policies that embrace the principles and support policies and initiative that support robust service delivery remain key to the approach we will be taking. And as we get into the emerging themes of what's coming out in 2022, how those policy statements will relate to the ongoing legislative efforts related to public to public safety and justice. Unless there's questions, I'll move on to the next slide, please, Kevin. As stated, like with the previous slide, this has not changed since our November presentation. This is really focusing us in on making sure that we have the resources, resources necessary to continue the long-term economic recovery and economic development and growth within the county, especially those that offset our investments of our dollars, either through tax forbearances or other programs that we make, or other programs that we use. The main one here is gain share and working in that renewal of the, or extension of the gain share out 10 years is our goal at this point in time, just not changing the, the structure around it, but really just making sure that as your board starts looking at your strategic planning over the next year with CAO Angie, that you have an idea of what the resources are going to be, because those are significant funds that have an impact on what we can and cannot do strategically, and making sure that we have that local flexibility to make sure we're meeting the needs of the community where they are. So that is our goal for 2022 related to this bullet point in particular. But other programs that are necessary that may be under conversation, we would be participating as part of the, the policy established here in this agenda item. So I guessing Commissioner Willie has a question since he came off mute.
Thank you, Erin. So what is, tell me what providing flexible funds to the county allows year-to-year consideration of how to target resources in a more equitable and responsive manner. What, what, what are we saying there?
What we're saying there is that allowing local control over how those funds are spent means that you, as a board that meets on the regular, much more regularly than the legislature, who might otherwise restrict what we could spend these dollars on or, you know, the pockets of funding that we can use, that if you, we need to maintain that local flexibility so that as you see changing needs in the community, you can adjust your budgets for those, those dollars that come down from the state to address what you feel is the, the top priorities of the community and to use the structure that we have at Washington County to ensure that equitable policy considerations, budgeting processes are, continue to move forward and that our investments meet the needs of the local community, because you, as the county commission, are in control of those dollars.
Okay. Thank you, Erin.
I know, I get paid by the word.
Yeah, I had a question on that one, too. Erin, that doesn't make it too much sense to the average person, what you just said. I, I think I follow it, but it, it's very convoluted. And I'm not being critical. I, I understand attorneys write lots of words. But i, i, if, can you crisp that up, clean it up so that it makes sense to somebody in the audience who may not understand exactly what you're saying?
I will work on that in the, the couple of days before we get the final PDF put together, and I will make sure to send an email to the board so you have that noting, what the, highlighting the language change, and we can have that conversation. Essentially, I will make sure that the wording states that this principle or this agenda item is essentially maintaining that local flexibility so that the board can address how to spend the resources that meet community needs through local conversation. Is that clearer?
That, that's a lot clearer. Does that have anything to do with the SIP payments?
This is about the gain share dollars that come back down from the state. The SIP dollars, I, I don't believe are under consideration for conversation in 2022. I have been hearing rumors that there might be more conversation around SIP for 2023. And we'll, then, we'll, as we move forward into that 2023 session, we'll be starting to have those conversations with you about how to word our principles related to that type of program. But for gain share dollars in particular here, we want to make sure that the program stays as is, allowing you to take those as general fund dollars and investment, invest them in the ways that you and the community work to agree to.
Just make one more comment, and I'll stop on this. Gain share, you, you heard from the new CEO of Intel about the strategic kind of relationships that they think they have to have. And there is no way that we wouldn't have gotten that Intel had we not put together a gain share program. That was from the state to us, but also that we not allowed for some, some property tax abatement. I know down there, we have grandchildren and children in Arizona, they're building a big, big fab. And I know that it, looking at a lot of jobs down in that area. I, I really think it's time for us to get serious about our relationship, but not that we haven't been, but even more so with Intel. I, I don't want to see 21,000 people all of a sudden relocating to Arizona. And I think that we have a natural ally in them, and we need to be really pumping it at the, the state legislature to equip this stuff of, they get the revenue from the tax dollars, from income tax, but we get nothing for foregoing all of the taxes on the property. And so I, I know that may not be any part of what you're doing here, but it just seems to me that we have a, a, a very interested ally who I think has a lot louder and clearer voice in the state of Oregon politics than we ever will. When Intel knocks on the door, even the President of the United States opens it up. So I mean, it seems to me we ought to be really pushing that Intel is a wonderful, clean partner, strategic partner for the United States of America to have its chips. And we ought to be really pretty, maybe I'm by myself, but I think we really ought to be saying loud and clear. You know, gain share is not an option for the local community. Anyway, I'll stop.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. And that goes towards how we'll be messaging and talking about gain shares as we pursue this policy in 2022. And it's definitely part of the story that we're going to be telling. I think that to, to open that conversation up a little bit more, there are many pieces to why SIP and gain share work together. And I'm starting to create this metaphor in my mind, and I'll share it with you now, so this is going to go really well. That basically economic development, workforce development, jobs, economic recovery, these are all gears. And if you take one of the gears out of the system, you can't turn the rest of the system. So property tax exemption programs like SIP only function when we have gain share to help us turn that gear through the process. And so, but we also need to have those investments in the workforce, because one of the things that we've seen come out of this relationship with Intel and the development that they've been doing, and similarly with Genentech, we're seeing some really good long-term jobs in the manufacturing industry that pay better than the median income. Those aren't jobs that require a PhD to accomplish. These are jobs that folks go to PCC, get their certifications for, and can come and do in the long term at Intel and at Genentech. So that's part of the overall conversation about not just why it's important to have the strategic partnership with Intel, that's another piece of this conversation. But overall, it's not just the benefits to state But overall, it's not just the benefits to state revenue and the county's revenue, it's the benefit to the people who live here in Oregon. And that I think is the important part of why gain share has to continue to make sure that all those excuse me, all those cogs can continue to turn to make sure that at the end of the day, we have a well-supported workforce with a diversity of jobs that come in, not just in Washington County, but across the state. If there's no further questions or comments related to this one, I will now turn it over to Tracy from Clean Water Services, who we will continue to work with Clean Water Services as a county, providing the support as they need at the state level, but they will be Tracy will preventing, presenting on their updates to their legislative agenda at both the federal and state level. And we can move to the next slide and to Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin, and good afternoon, board. For the record, I'm Tracy Rainey, Senior Policy Analyst with Clean Water Services. I had the opportunity to present Clean Water Services state and federal legislative agendas to the board in early November. And today I'll provide a very brief update as we have since completed our internal review process at Clean Water Services. I will note that there were no substantial changes made to our agenda through that internal review process. However, there was one minor addition to the state legislative agenda, and I will explain that additional item when we get to that particular slide. Next slide, please. I will take just a few minutes to remind the board of our proposed federal legislative priorities for 2022. Again, there were no significant changes made to our federal legislative agenda as was presented to you in November. Most of our proposed federal priorities are largely focused around supporting and securing federal investment for water infrastructure. Unfortunately, as Erin mentioned, the recent passage of the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act will provide significant enhanced funding, including for water infrastructure. In fact, the bill represents the largest investment in water infrastructure in American history. So we're incredibly excited about the opportunities that this legislation will provide nationally, here in Oregon and locally as well. An important component of that infrastructure bill was an investment of $8.3 billion to the Bureau of Reclamation, which provides a very real opportunity and accelerated timeline for reformation to make seismic improvements to Stog and Sam. We are in the midst of conversations with reformation, local repayment partners and others we work with on that project. And we'll be working to support and secure federal investment in Stog and Sam going forward. In addition, we've identified potential funding opportunities that we believe will assist us and the region in future water resource planning within our basin. We'll be working to continue to support these federal investments and to secure federal funding for projects in our region, including expanded reuse opportunities. Next slide, please. There were no changes that were made to the items on this slide. It's just a quick review. Our proposed federal legislative agenda includes ongoing support for water infrastructure investment more broadly. While the recent infrastructure bill was a huge step forward, there is still a need for additional investments, including for programs that were authorized under that bill, but are still in need of appropriation. We will be coordinating with our state association and national association of clean water agencies to support additional investment opportunities for water, including for low-income household water and sewer rate assistance. And the last three items are carryover items from our prior year's agendas and include necessary maintenance and operations funding for Wapato Lake National Wildlife Refuge. Support for implementation of EPA's integrated planning approach for water quality permits. And continuing our support for the work of the 12th and Soil and Water Conservation District in our partnership with them to provide landowners with technical assistance on conservation practices. Next slide, please. Okay, my last slide today outlines proposed state legislative agenda items for 2022. As a reminder, we are not planning to bring forward any legislative concepts proactively. But we will be engaging in a number of conversations and advocacy opportunities that we believe are likely to occur going into the state legislative session and in the interim immediately following. The only change that we have made since our last presentation is the addition of the fifth bullet item on this list, which is monitoring statewide water visioning and planning conversations. This item was previously envisioned to be a component of our work under bullet number three. As we anticipate, there will be opportunities to promote reuse and green infrastructure within the setting of statewide water visioning conversations. However, our staff felt it needs sense to specifically call out our anticipated efforts to monitor these statewide conversations. And so that is now specifically reflected in that fifth item. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Sorry, I thought you were going to move to the next slide.
I was just about to wrap up, Chair, so your question is perfect timing.
Well, I was just wondering, given that we on the board are, are hearing more from Clean Water Services experts more about how reliant our work in using leading and best-in-class practices for water recovery and for water reuse. I was putting myself in our legislative partner's seats. And I've come to appreciate how important funding DEQ is to our agency's achievement of the work that your your information from guiding principles and, and agenda leads us to. And so maybe it's clear to our state legislative partners and their legislative assistants and also to our city jurisdictional partners that are reliant upon us as the regional water resource recovery utility to be able to take their used water and clean it. So I'm curious, could you help me understand either maybe we're at this point already, or maybe in future time with the next biennium, how we need to start explicitly advocating for ensuring DEQ is providing the funding for the work we need them to do. I guess I, I just realized, oh, short session versus long lead-long session. Thoughts?
Absolutely. And thank you, Chair Arrington. And I am really pleased that you brought that point forward. I think that that is an agency and all of our natural resource agencies that probably don't get enough attention and are expected to do just significant amount of work and to do it well. And but don't always have the budget resources to accomplish those tasks. And so absolutely. And you are correct, though, it is a short session, so we don't anticipate having extensive budget conversations to support some of those, you know, critical positions within DEQ to support the work that we need to do. But we do absolutely anticipate that that would be folded into our agenda for the next long legislative session. And we will likely start that work on budget processes, I would imagine, in the spring and summer. And going, which just seems too soon, but we are probably at that place where we're going to start talking about long legislative sessions. And so absolutely, thank you for plugging that. And with, I'm happy to take any additional questions. That does wrap up my presentation. So again, your question was great timing, Chair. I will turn it back over to Paige unless there are additional questions.
Thank you, Tracy. We are now turning away from discussing the county and Clean Water Services legislative agendas. And again, look forward to sharing the final documents with your board and bringing them to you next week for approval. The next topic is the 2022 State Legislative Session Emerging Themes. And you know, these are topics that we anticipate legislators will bring forward, that we will use our guiding principles to respond to. So we have a few to cover. And if we could advance the next slide, please. Erin will take the first three and I will take the second three.
Thank you, Paige. These emerging, excuse me, these emerging themes are reflective of the conversations we heard with the legislators in the November legislative days, in addition to the conversations we've had with various partners, legislators, the governor's office and others. The first bullet point here is the revenue forecast. This is less of an emergent theme, but an emerging basis by which the rest of the themes are going to grow from. At, at the November legislative days, there was a revenue forecast that Jajit provided a very robust summary of in our November, I believe it was 19th GR weekly memo. So if you want more details, you can find them there. But the high-level takeaway is that the state economy is still looking to have a very robust recovery. And in fact, they think that we'll be returning to full employment within the next year, which is three times faster than the 28 Great Recession. However, the state economist acknowledged that we have a supply-side issue and that supply is failing to keep up with demand, which then has creates its own barriers to and a smooth and full recovery coming out of the COVID-19, provided we get to come out of the COVID-19 over the course of the next year. But it was also noted by the state economists, and they continue to do deeper dives into this, that the, the recovery is not equal for everyone. That there are continuing needs for the investments. We have been very lucky with the federal dollars that have come into the system to offset much of the economic damage that was possible because of COVID-19. But those dollars are likely to go to, to wane over the next few years as we work through our ARPA funding and it's, you know, given how the federal legislative picture is looking, whether or not there'll be continued investment if the economy requires it. So overall, the trends are good in Oregon, but every, everything is changeable, as we've seen over the course of the last two years. But what this all means for legislative issues is that the state has a greater-than-expected revenue outlook for the next biennium, which means that it's very likely that we'll be seeing budget adjustments using state general funds in addition to the ARPA dollars that they have left over in the 2022 session, while also having a kicker for income taxpayers in Oregon. So transitioning now into the economic recovery, we expect there will be a package of investments that we'll see come out of those general fund dollars, but also the remaining ARPA dollars. In conversations with the governor's office, we expect them to be really pursuing for discrete areas for economic recovery. First is in the housing area. Second is in workforce, looking towards investing in developing a stronger and more resilient workforce, particularly focusing in on healthcare, manufacturing and construction workforces, and really targeting those that are most vulnerable in their, within the community. So lower-income wage earners, people of color, women, rural, veteran, formerly incarcerated, those types of communities who really need that type of investment and, and those long-term steady jobs. In addition, they're looking at infrastructure to see what's left on the table that needs investment. And finally, childcare, which is something I know that the commissioners talked about this morning in your leadership conversation about the need for childcare stability in order to have full and robust economic recovery. The governor's office is working with a number of different partners and we have asked to be a part of that conversation and we feel that they fit well within our COVID-19 agenda item to, to ensure that short and long-term economic recovery and business resilience for for our small businesses and our community-based organizations. And we believe we'll be able to support those, these ongoing efforts for the economic recovery of Washington County in particular. And then finally, covering again for Jajit, in the public safety domain, we expect to see a continuation of the public safety reform efforts that will begun in, honestly, begun in 2020 and worked through the 2021 session. The big major on the US bill, which I believe was House Bill 2001, had pieces of it that did not make it through the process and we expect them to be brought back for further consideration in the 2022 session. In addition to addressing any other financial needs that we have. So it's an ongoing conversation that we don't believe ended in 2021 and we will continue to see things come forward in 2022. And with that, I'll turn it back to Paige to cover the last two bullet points.
Thank you, Erin. So I'm not kind of stuck here in the middle eviction prevention, this December 13th special session. So we know that eviction protections will be a theme of the short session as well. But as a reminder, the legislature is convening into a special session called by the governor on December 13th. And in the interest of time for this presentation, I will not delve into what that package is shaping up to be. However, if you'd like to review the information that is in your board's government relations memo that we sent out on Friday, excuse me, got a computer notification, on Friday the 3rd. For Health and Human Services, one of the emerging themes is aid and assist. You know, as a reminder, aid and assist is if a judge finds the defendant is unable to aid and assist in their own defense because of mental health issues, they are sent to a state hospital or to a community mental health program like Washington County's prior to standing trial, so that they can aid and assist in their own defense. There are some policy bills that are expected to come out in the 2022 short session to address the state hospital capacity crisis. And government relations will be looking out for any implications to CMHPs or community mental health programs like Washington County's. And then on the liability exposure component of Health and Human Services and Community Mental Health, you may recall that unfortunately, Government Relations was not successful in passing a bill in the 2021 session that would reduce risk to the county. Prior to a bill passed by the legislature to state manage the risk portfolio associated with aid and assist work. But now the risk bearing has been shifted to local government. We were successful last year in getting excess liability insurance added to our contract with the Oregon Health Authority for the aid and assist work. But we still need a long-term fix and are exploring a few options in the short session to resolve this. And then finally, for the Housing Authority of Washington County, some emerging themes will be one, preservation, which is funding streams and policies to preserve the state's affordable housing supply, meaning preventing current affordable units from converting to market rate. And then notably regarding city-county homelessness response coordination, Marnie Kyle spoke to your board on November 30th regarding the legislative concept to fund five pilot projects around the state on city and county-coordinated homelessness response. And it is my understanding that the county does intend to move forward by submitting a letter of intent by the deadline of this Friday, December 10th. And government relations will work during session to try to get that bill over the finish line. And with that, we can go to the next slide, please. And Erin will walk us through our legislative timeline for the last topic of our presentation today. And then we'll be happy to take questions or entertain any conversation at the end if there is time left. Erin, please go ahead. And next slide, Kevin, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Kevin. So these next three months should look familiar. We have been forecasting what's going to be happening through March since September. The only notable change is the special session that Paige noted is scheduled for December 13th. In addition to the, the meat of it going around rental assistance, there is also conversation that is happening for funding related to cannabis work, primarily targeted to counties that are seeing abundantly large grows and water fights breaking out. Therefore, likely not to see any additional income coming into Washington County Sheriff's Department to, to address that. And additionally, we the other topic that is under discussion with, with counties in particular is, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes because I forgot to write it down in the place that I hadn't switched my notes on, is related to oh, I have misplaced that note. I thought I wrote it over there and it's somewhere else. There is one final topic that again is not going to have a big impact on Washington County. But we'll have some money come in to address ongoing issues related, I believe it's to other recovery efforts from the, the fire, the fires. So that is what is expected to come through in the legislative specials. Oh, sorry, drought, not fires, drought. That's what is expected to come through in the special session in December. One thing I would like to highlight in December, January and February is work that's going to happen related to our federal efforts related to preparing the county to have a well-timed conversation as opposed to a rushed conversation about what we might put forward as potential earmark requests to our federal delegation. I've started that conversation with Vance Goyik and will now be turning to our leadership team to figure out the best process by which we can be identifying those potential earmark requests that we would see come, we would, we would bring back to the board. So for the course of December and much of January, we're working to identify and provide the information to the board about what those possible earmarks might look like, looking in between that two and five million dollar range, based on what came out of the process so far this year. There's a little bit more time than we originally thought, given the extension of the continuing resolution out until February. They really can't start working on the next budget until they finish last year's fiscal year budget. So we'll be working with, with staff in December and January to make sure that we have as much information as we can to help inform the board, as you then would be tasked probably in February, as we meet with Vance Goyik, to essentially select and prioritize those potential earmarks. But in January, the GR team will also be turning to prepare for that the advocacy we need to do in that February session with some final legislative days and the publication of legislative concepts. And then in February, obviously, we'll be working very hard at the state level. We're still not 100% certain what that physically looks like, whether we'll be down in Salem, which we believe is likely, or if they will continue or if they will continue to do more remote processes. As I stated, a Van Skoye will be coming to the board remotely in at that February 8 work session to talk through what those earmark process might look like and if there is going to be travel to DC, which I believe you will be having a conversation around that at your January roundtable and as well as NICO legislative days. So all of that is what's happening in February while your GR team is working hard down in Salem. Next slide, please. This slide seems almost more reasonable as a result, but that's mostly because it's three to six months out. And so we don't actually have set dates for a lot of things. But the state session is constitutionally required to sign a diet by the 7th of March. In April, we have no dates of note, which is just rare and fun, but we will be getting to the process of preparing for the 2023 session because as has been discussed here, it is a long session. There will be budgetary considerations and so we really need to have our ducks in a row as far as moving forward with the legislative agenda and knowing exactly what our departments need and what big policy items we need to start having conversations around. And then finally, the last prognostication we'll make in this timeline is in May. We just wanted to highlight the election day for you because we've gotten to May on the on the timeline. And then because Clean Water Services has traditionally provided a DC trip in in May to go back and do the advocacy with Clean Water Services, we noted that here, but we have no dates and I know that conversation is ongoing. Mark is here to answer any questions related to that. But with that, go to the last slide and happy to take questions about the timeline, any of the aforementioned agenda items, emerging themes, or anything else the board would like to discuss with your GR team and Clean Water Services team today. Thank you.
Thank you to the three of you commissioners. Any other questions or comments for today? I'll just say that I think we are very well-served by our four members across the two agencies that work most closely with us as well as our team members at Van Skoye, both the two for Washington County and Peter also for Clean Water Services. So hearing no other thoughts from the commission, thank you for your excellence and we look forward to our continuing collaboration. And let's hope that that special session isn't too draining. Terrific.
Thank you, Chair.
Great. Well, with that, we have seven minutes before we proceed to our time-certain topic of the Washington County Preschool for All Task Force where we have some outside speakers. I can say that I have not looked at the attendees list to see if we have all of the speakers.
Madam Chair, they are not online as of yet.
Okay, well, then why don't we take a short break and reconvene at 2 o'clock? Is that okay? Okay, I see thumbs up and videos off. So let's do that. Thank you. Hello to our outside speakers. I got caught up with my favorite magazine this weekend. Did you see your article from the November 22 Bloomberg Business Week? Oh, let me turn my video off of my background off here. Oh, crud. The headline, "The Most Broken Business in America." It's a multi-page article. That was the title page, multi-page article in Bloomberg Bloomberg Business Magazine about the business of childcare and the Multnomah County Preschool for All Program was highlighted. Megan Irwin was quoted. It was fantastic. So I just haven't had a chance to find the article online to send you all the link, but I will endeavor to do that. So we are just waiting for all of our commissioners to reconvene. Commissioner Treese, would you like to do the intro? Or would you like me to?
Chair, I think you I think you should do it, but I'm I'm real excited that both Megan and Sarah are here, so.
So I tend to be the the dry one for introducing topics and Commissioner Treese always brings her in her very positive energy. So she'll she'll help me do it justice. So welcome, everyone. We have two outside guest speakers. Sarah Pope, who is the Deputy Superintendent at the Northwest Educational Service District and a member of the the Preschool for All Task Force. And then Megan Irwin, a real serious expert in this domain and helping task forces such as the preschool, the Washington County Preschool for All Task Force scope out this topic. So Commissioner Treese and I are participating on this task force, which is led by co-chairs Olga Acunio of the Hillsborough School District and Bridget Cook from Adelante Mejeres, who we all know, Adelante Mejeres, they have childcare and a preschool program. So Commissioner Treese and I have been participating on the task force as it has been exploring needs here in Washington County. Not just for the need for more childcare, but also how do we ensure that we are building the necessary workforce and retaining the workers that we already have? And other training programs, so on and so forth. So we have been giving verbal updates to the commissioners along the way. Commissioners have also had one-on-one briefings directly from the co-chairs. But we wanted to ensure we did our due diligence to bring a progress report, so to speak, to the full commission so that we could hear one another's conversation. So I would like to make sure Commissioner Treese has the opportunity to add in some comments before we turn it over to our subject matter expert speakers. Go ahead, Vice Chair Treese.
Thank you, Chair. I I think what has been really fascinating to me about this process is the rigor through which we have gone through each one of the steps. And I really appreciate both Megan and Sarah leading us through all of the different pieces of what it means to look at a program like this. I think that there's an incredible amount of lessons learned from the Multnomah County process that they brought to us. There are when I entered into this, I wasn't necessarily thinking, you know, I'm thinking about how we address the issues of early childhood education. And I'm thinking about, you know, the three-year-old, the cute little three-year-old. When, you know, my eyes were open to what what does it cost to to bring services to that three-year-old? What do what do we need to be considering your relationship to the teachers, the the supporters, all of those? And how do we look at an appropriate pay range for those types of people as well? So I I just I just want you all to know that I believe strongly that this has been a really thorough process. But your eyes and ears on this process are are critical as well, and I'm saying that to my fellow commissioners. So thank you, Megan. Thank you, Sarah, for being here. You've kept our feet to the fire. We've all worked hard together. And I am pleased that we can bring this presentation to the commissioners at this point and talk about the now and the potential for the future.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington and Commissioner Treese. Oh, and somebody has the slides. Should we just start going then? All right. Really appreciate the time and for putting us on the agenda. As Chair Harrington said, my name is Sarah Pope. I'm the Deputy Superintendent at Northwest Regional Education Service District. So we serve children predominantly zero to five in early childhood special education. And my esteemed colleague Megan Irwin is going to briefly introduce herself as well.
Hi, Chair Harrington, members of the commission. It's so nice to meet you. As Chair Harrington said, my name is Megan Irwin. I'm a public policy consultant who is supporting the Preschool for All Washington County Task Force. As Chair Harrington mentioned, I worked with the Multnomah County Commission and community from 2018 to 2020 on their universal preschool measure. I served previously as the Early Learning System Director for the state. And also my tie to your community is that I served as Beaverton School District's first administrator for early childhood education when we were getting their preschool programs started. So it's so nice to be reconnected to the Washington County community through this project and thanks for having us here.
And thank you in the background for whomever is running the slides. We're going to alternate back and forth. And so we're going to go ahead to the next slide. I'm just going to briefly show you what we're going to cover today. We're going to make sure we have lots of time for discussion. These are the four items we're going to cover. So we're going to briefly highlight what the research says around preschool. We're going to define the problem specifically in Washington County as it relates to preschool and then share what the task force is working on around developing a set of policy recommendations or a solution to those defined problems. And then we're going to close by speaking a little bit to the proposal at the federal level that if we're if it were to pass, how it might interact with the Washington County specific solution around preschool. So those are the four things we're going to cover. We're going to keep this to no more than 25 minutes of a discussion or presentation and then have lots of time for Q and A and discussion. So if you want to move to the next slide, we probably all know either through children who we've raised or grandchildren or nieces and nephews or ourselves that preschool matters. I personally am really invested in this work. Like I mentioned, as the Deputy Superintendent at the ESD, we serve children who are three and four in special education and we see firsthand that there's not enough opportunities for them to enroll in preschool that they need and that they can afford. As a mom of two, I have a preschooler and a kindergartner. I also have the lived experience of knowing how hard it is to find high-quality preschool you can afford in Washington County. We felt really lucky when we got ourselves into preschool for our children after being on waitlist for long periods of time. And it costs almost as much as our mortgage payment every month to do that. So both see it professionally and personally. And so when the ESD decided to convene this task force, it was really excited because we know that we can make a significant difference in the lives of kids if we invest in the upstream program like preschool. Furthermore, as it relates to preschool, there's a large body of research, right, on early childhood brain and biological development. We know that children's brains between this year, between birth to five are growing faster than pretty much any other point in their life. And yet, as a country and as a state, we have not invested systematically in any sort of program for children who are three and four. And we know that when we do that, both the academic, but also the social and emotional skills that those children can develop will last a lifetime. We also know that children, when they have access to programs that celebrate their home culture and their language, that can help those children build a real positive sense of self and identity that they can carry throughout their lifetimes. And that when families with children in those preschool programs are supported, they're more active in their children's elementary school experience as they move through. And last, but certainly not least, it's not just an impact on the child. It's also an impact for the economy and our larger community that research has shown, and Megan's going to speak to this at a high level. Next, every dollar we invest in preschool yields $7 to $10 in terms of a return on investment. So it's both an economic driver. Also, it really, really develops the child and the family who's involved. So I'm going to pass it to Megan to speak a little bit more about some of those studies I highlighted just at a very high level.
Thanks, Sarah. So if we move to the next slide, one study that emphasizes, really the seminal study that emphasizes one study that emphasizes, really the seminal study that emphasizes the impact that preschool can have on a child and a community over the span of a person's entire lifetime is the High School Perry Preschool Study. You can see here findings on this slide. The Perry Preschool Study was a longitudinal study that followed the trajectory of children who participated in the Perry Preschool Program, a very high-quality preschool program, as well as a control group of peers who did not participate over the course of their entire lifetime. And as you can see here, the children who participated in the Perry Preschool Program experienced far better lifetime outcomes in really every domain, from educational achievement to things like involvement with the criminal justice system to lifetime earnings than children who were in the control group. Additionally, in 2019, the Heckman Institute, which is an economic research center that does research on many things, including early childhood education, published a study on the intergenerational effects of participation in the Perry Preschool Program, of participation in high-quality preschool, and found substantial second generation effects in education, employment, crime, school suspension, health, every kind of social determinant of health for the children of the children who participated in the Perry Preschool Program as compared to the children of the children in the control group. This is really exciting because it highlights to us just how significant the return on investment for high-quality preschool can be. And it makes an impact not just across the individual child and preschool program's lifespan, but their children as well. If we go to the next slide, this again, this is this research comes out of the Heckman Institute. This slide really just emphasizes the rate of return on investment in in educational programs. And what we want you to notice is that the biggest return on investment really is in the early years of life, really from zero to five, and that preschool has quite a high return on investment as compared to like post-vention, things like job training and places where we're trying to intervene much further down the line in someone's life after the brain's already been developed. We had a much stronger ROI the earlier we intervene, and preschool is a great way, a great way to make an impact, a significant impact. If we turn, so that's just a quick preview, a quick look at the research that supports why we're here talking to you about preschool today. Let's turn now to the next slide. I'm gonna take a few moments just framing up for you the current context and the current landscape around preschool in Washington County. I'm going to frame up for you the core challenges that Washington County is facing when it comes to making sure that every child has the opportunity to benefit from a positive preschool experience and get the ROI that we just looked at on those last two slides. Before I show you a bunch of challenges, though, I do wanna just highlight some reasons to be excited and some reasons for optimism. First of all, preschool is on the radar nationally and locally in a way that it just hasn't been before. 10 years ago, when I was first starting and working in early childhood education, we were just kind of like begging people to look at the data to understand the return on investment and like, maybe, could you please make some investments in preschool and early childhood education? And these days, while we'll never stop talking about the return on investment and the important impact that preschool has, we are in a place where there's so much more momentum for this work federally, at the state level, and at the local level. We're seeing commitment and investment and problem solving in early childhood education and preschool specifically in a way that we just haven't seen in decades in this country. So there's a lot of reason to be excited, and there's a lot of reason for Washington County to be getting involved in doing this work now. However, there are some major challenges, right? There there we wouldn't be doing this if we weren't facing challenges and trying to come up with solutions for them. And so I want you to be knowledgeable about what they are as we head into talking to you about the solutions that we've been coming up with. There are really three big challenges in this community. I'm gonna run through them on the next three slides pretty quickly for you. But for you to have a frame, your three core challenges when it comes to preschool in this community are capacity and affordability, workforce needs, and then inequities and disparities that do unfortunately exist for families in Washington County. So if we turn to the first challenge, starting on the next slide, let's start with capacity and affordability. I'm sure it comes as no surprise to any of you who have raised children or have grandchildren that preschool and childcare are just wildly unaffordable in Washington County, really in Oregon. You can see here the final bullet point on this slide. The median cost of care is between $645 to about $1,400 a month, depending on the setting. These numbers are from 2018. It's the most recent data we have. And we know this is just the median cost of care, and some families are paying much more. But even if you are just paying in the median, $1,300 a month is quite expensive for most working families in our community, especially in COVID times. In addition to the fact that it's unaffordable, unfortunately, Washington County is a childcare desert. That means that there are, for every one slot that exists in your community, there are three children who need that slot. This problem is especially pronounced for infant toddler care. It's also quite serious for for preschool age. You can see here the number of publicly funded slots that exist in your community, 2,216. Those are state and federally funded preschool slots for low-income families. To access those slots, you have to be at 200% of the poverty level or less, leaving many low-income and middle-class working families behind. And even when we talk about tuition-based slots, they're quite simply are not enough for all of the children who need it. So we have not only affordability gaps in this community, but capacity and access gaps. And my caveat for all the data that I'm showing you is that these data are pre-COVID. They come from a study that OSU does, and the study lags. And so the capacity issue, the number of slots that are available may actually be even less than what we're looking on this slide due to the way that the pandemic has impacted the childcare industry. If we move to the next slide, we can see there are also challenges when it comes to the available workforce. Can't have universal preschool without a well-supported, educated, highly skilled workforce. Preschool teachers and assistants are the drivers of a successful program. And right now, there are big challenges when it comes to workforce. You can see here the number of folks that were working in regulated facilities in 2019. That number has dropped. We know anecdotally that programs are significant are experiencing significant labor shortages, just like almost every other industry is right now. One thing I will highlight is that statewide, the childcare and preschool industry sees about 24% turnover a year in normal times. I think any of you who come out of private industry know, like, a 24, 25% turnover rate of your workforce is awful and makes it really hard to build sustainable business. It's even kind of worse in this situation because it makes it hard for children to form secure attachments to the people that are educating and caring for them. There are many reasons for this high turnover rate, but the driving force behind it really is wages. And you can see here, the median hourly wage for a head teacher, this is the lead teacher in a center-based program. So these are the highest-paid preschool teachers in the community, is between $13 and $18 an hour. What I hear anecdotally from providers right now is like, I just can't compete with Burgerville or Amazon. Those jobs are still difficult, but not as difficult as caring for and educating children, and and I can't I can't compete wage-wise with them. So we have some pretty significant workforce issues that we need to address in this community. And then in addition to wages, there are just limited opportunities for training, coaching, professional development, all of the things that make a person want to stay in their job are hard to access for folks doing this really important work. And then if we move on just quickly to our third challenge that the task force is working to solve, there on the next slide, there are significant disparities and inequities when it comes to accessing preschool in this community. So in a childcare desert, every single family, regardless of income, privilege, savviness, is going to face a challenge finding a slot because we have a supply issue. And if you're somebody who faces any form of marginalization, whether that is due to income, a disability, race, whatever it is, it's going to be even harder for you to to get access to a slot, let alone a slot that you can afford, let alone a slot that matches with your language, your culture, your child's developmental needs. And so you can see here on this slide, this comes from research that Early Learning Washington County conducted. These are the children with the least access to a quality preschool slot today. And you can see it's children from BIPOC communities, children with housing instability, children who experience poverty, and then children who have multiple vulnerabilities. So there are some access issues for everyone. And then if you're vulnerable in any way, those access issues are really exacerbated for you. So now that I have bummed everyone out, I'm gonna pass it back to Sarah so that we can get back kind of on the hope train a little bit and talk about what we're doing, what really your community is doing to develop some solutions to these pretty big challenges.
Thank you, Megan. So this is the halfway mark. So you learned about some of the research. You've learned about some of the challenges, and now we're gonna talk about some of the developing solutions, and we'll conclude with the impact of any potential federal legislation. So when it comes to this work, the E S D, like I mentioned, has seen it firsthand, right? We serve children zero to five, many of whom are three and four, don't have enough access to preschool for those children who we serve through their special education services. We also see, as Megan said, superintendents getting increasingly interested in getting involved in preschool because they see what happens when children have access to preschool when they then start kindergarten. So those two factors came together, and the E S D convened a task force at the beginning, earlier in the year, to build a plan to address the preschool affordability and the access gap and the workforce challenges and the equity considerations that Megan talked about. So in this approach we're taking to making these decisions, we're using a truly community-centered participatory style of decision-making. We've set a really broad table, and I think you can go to the next slide now, and there should be a representation of this in a minute. We've set a really broad table with superintendents and Head Start and preschool and childcare providers, advocacy organizations, community-based organizations, parents and healthcare leaders and elected leaders, Mayor Callaway, Mayor Beatty's on the task force, along with your colleagues, Commissioner Trees and County Chair Harrington, to put together a plan. Ultimately, this process is designed to bring many, many minds and many experiences to the discussion table to build a set of policy recommendations that's grounded in research around preschool and also real-life knowledge, expertise, and the experience of parents and providers. So we're turning now to the vision of the task force, and then we're gonna walk through some of the policy recommendations they have made to date. So in terms of the vision of the task force, here's how it's taking shape. It's one of a preschool program that's universal and open to all three- and four-year-olds, where the experience in the classroom is joyful, culturally responsive, developmentally appropriate, and inclusive. In addition to adding enough preschool classroom, the task force vision includes making those long-needed investments in supporting the preschool workforce, as Megan just talked about, and infrastructure. So physically, the space needed to be able to add enough classrooms and educators to the system that doesn't currently exist to have a universal program be successful in Washington County. So together, we're gonna put forth a comprehensive plan to address each of the challenges and barriers we've shared with you. And ultimately, if successful, we'll be asking you, the Board of County Commissioners, to refer our plan to the 2022 ballot for voters to decide. So if you want to go to the next slide, this is when you actually get a sense. This is the slide I was thinking of in my head as I was describing the process to you. So here's how the task force is structured. We have the task force itself, which is a core group of leaders who I mentioned, the sorts of organizations in which they're a part of, who discuss and improve recommendations on the program's policies. And the task force receives those recommendations from two workgroups. One focused on program and workforce decisions, and another focused on infrastructure and administration. And those workgroups are made up of subject matter experts working in the field today. And finally, the workgroups and the task force are both informed by recommendations and advice we've collected through focus groups of providers and parents. So from the summer, from August, the summer through November, we've held 11 focus groups interviewing more than 100 parents and providers to ensure that the recommendations will finalize in March are aligned with their needs and advice. So if you go to the next slide, you will get to see the organizations represented in this progress. And as I mentioned earlier, our aim was to set a really broad and inclusive table, ensure that the makeup of the committee really racially also matches the makeup of Washington County's demographics. So these are the organizations and some of the individuals who are involved in the task force and the workgroup to date. So I'm gonna pass it back to Megan, who's gonna talk a little bit about the decisions and recommendations that the task force has landed on at this point.
Thanks, Sarah. So here's where I get to show you some of the solutions that you're that the these community members that were just on that last slide have come up with to all the problems that I just shared with you. So we are still in the research and policy development phase of this work, and we will produce a report for you and for the community with a comprehensive framework for the program, and that will be done in the beginning of March. However, we wanted to preview for you the decisions that have been made so far and how this policy framework is shaping up. So I'm gonna walk through those quickly so you can see how the group is thinking about addressing each of the challenges that we framed up for you, starting with challenge number one, capacity and affordability. So the task force, in terms of solving this problem, has really emphasized expanding slots, creating more available space. That means infrastructure, like homes, centers, school buildings for these classrooms to exist in, and allowing for parent choice and flexibility and selecting the best program for their child. So of course, this program is free for all three- and four-year-olds. It's optional. But it would be free and available for any family with a three- or four-year-old who wanted it. It's a mixed-delivery program. Again, that's to maximize parent choice. So what mixed-delivery means is that the program could be administered in a school, an elementary school, in a existing childcare center, a community-based program like THPRD or the YMCA, and that home-based providers can be included as well. Again, focusing on really having a program that's flexible to meet families' needs. Preschool for All would offer both full-day and half-day options, as well as full-year, like year-round and school-year options, knowing that the needs of of working families where both parents work outside the home can differ significantly from from families where maybe one parent is able to stay home. We wanna just make sure that there's a slot that is a good fit for every child that wants one. The task force has also recommended investing in extended day options for low-income families since families work, since most parents work more than a six-hour workday, wanting to make sure that folks that need it have support to have before-and-after care for their children. And the task force is recommending investments in infrastructure and facilities to grow the number of quality providers that exist. This would include both some direct investment from Preschool for All, as well as work to coordinate with and tap into existing funding that government agencies and jurisdictions already have to support small-business infrastructure development. So that would be things like community development funds, urban renewal funds, et cetera. There seems to be an excellent opportunity to weave these investments together to support these small-business owners that run preschools. On the next slide, we could get to see how the task force is thinking about solving workforce challenges. First and foremost, as I highlighted for you in the problem slide, wages need to increase for teachers, assistants, and aides working in preschool for all classrooms. We need to get them to a living wage. For teachers, that would be a wage on par with the average kindergarten teacher salary, depending on qualifications. For assistants, I believe we set it at $20 an hour. For aides, we set it at $18 an hour. So really raising the bar for what folks can earn working in this profession and making it an actual professional career path where you earn a living wage. Connected to wages, the task force has made recommendations around the level of qualification and training that folks working in those classrooms need to have. And those have been set at a level that both ensures quality, but also supports multiple pathways into the profession and keeps the folks currently working in the profession, working in the profession, and eligible to be a Preschool for All provider. They're also recommending significant investments in professional development and workforce supports, both coaching and investment and support in the current workforce, and also investments that would bring people either back to. and also um investments that would bring people either back to working in the field if they've left or um uh bring new folks in. So some recommendations around um partnering with high schools, um, with their CTE, their career technical education programs, as well as pathways that support people who are interested in the profession to enter into it with higher levels of certification and credentialing through both national credentialing programs, as well as partnerships with um local community college certificate and credential programs. And then finally, on the next slide, um, decisions that have been made so far to address inequities. The task force has really taken an equity lens and thinking about its um policies and thinking about early slot distribution. And two of the biggest equity-centered policies are are here on this slide for you. Um, again, I need to emphasize this program will be universally available to all three and four-year-olds. And because of the facilities challenge and the workforce challenge that I've highlighted for you, your community is not in a position where you could pass this and flip a switch and have universal preschool right out of the gate. No community is. There's no need to feel bad about it. It's just the state of things. And so in the early years, the task force has said, has said, let's prioritize those most vulnerable populations of children who currently struggle the most to access a quality, affordable slot. And you can see that priority population here on this slide. Um, and again, that's important because while the plan will be to ramp up to universal as quickly as possible, it's just not something that you can shift to immediately on a dime. And so the recommendation is really focused on kids with the multiple vulnerabilities, kids with the least access that we looked at on the inequity slide. And the second um piece of policy that's very important that the task force has focused on with regard to equity um is that suspensions and expulsions will not be allowed in this program. Um, this is in line with state policy that will be fully implemented by 2024. It is also in line with research that shows that Black, Indigenous, and really all children of color um and children with developmental delays and disabilities are disproportionately suspended or moved out of programs, which has huge impact on their um learning once they start kindergarten and significant equity impacts. So those are the highlights of the decisions that have been made so far. Um, I'll pass it back to Sarah now to talk about timeline, and then I'll pop back on to talk about Build Back Better.
Thank you so much, Megan. So we're closing in on the end here, just a timeline slide, and then you're gonna hear a little bit about implications if a federal program were to pass. And then we will conclude and then open it up for hopefully some good questions and discussion. So here's the timeline slide. As Megan alluded to, we're in Phase One, and will, assuming we do a good job and bring to you a set of policy recommendations in March, we'd move into Phase Two, where we'll fine-tune the policies and convene a pre-campaign referral steering committee to finalize a revenue mechanism um to form up the shape of the ballot measure. We'll also continue to work on fleshing out the recommendations coming out of the task force into something called an implementation guide or implementation guidance. So at this point, um, we do know, I'm sure there's a lot of questions about funding mechanisms. We do know what the funding mechanism is not likely to be. Um, and we have some ideas of what it could be, but that has not been defined yet, and that will get defined in Phase Two. So we know the funding mechanism is not gonna be a property tax measure. That's largely for two reasons. Um, one, uh, local tax, a local property tax measure would compress um other needed property tax measures that have already been passed. Um, two, when we've done some initial cost modeling of the program, uh, uh, tax measure, um, property tax measure does not generate enough revenue to create a universal program. So what the funding measures mechanisms could look like are two that will get investigated in that second phase. So it could look like a um high-income tax earner, or it could look like a payroll tax. And that's something that will get finalized by the pre-referral campaign committee after the task force has done a set of recommendations around cost modeling and policy development um and uh and move on into Phase Two. So that is the timeline slide. I'm gonna pass it back to Megan because we think a lot of you probably have questions too. You've heard about the federal proposal and how might that intersect with something that were, if it were to pass locally? So we're gonna conclude with that final slide and then open it up for questions and discussion.
Yep. Thank you, Sarah. So of course, let's acknowledge that this planning work is not happening in a vacuum. There are existing preschool programs funded by the state and federal government. Um, Preschool Promise is the state one, Head Start Oregon for Kindergarten Program is the federal one. And of course, Congress is considering a large federal investment in both preschool and childcare through the Build Back Better proposal. And this is very good news. This is very exciting news for your community. First, just to speak to the existing programs, um, the existing state and federal programs serve, like I alluded to earlier, our very lowest-income families. That is excellent. We are glad that that exists. It reduces the number of slots that you need to reach universal access in your community. Um, Preschool For All is being very thoughtfully designed to complement and work well with those programs so that funds can be um braided together and access can be expanded. Um, and really, the goal here is to get access for families like above 200% of the federal poverty level, um, as well as those who are currently being served or are eligible for state and federal programs. Second, like the big thing that everybody's talking about right now is the Build Back Better proposal. And Build Back Better represents a much-needed, large investment in preschool and childcare. However, it will still take local investment to fully fund and realize a high-quality, universal preschool system. So we don't know yet if it's going to pass, first of all. And if it were to pass, we don't know what Oregon will be allocated to receive from the federal proposal. Um, we do have some information that's kind of informing our thinking. So the White House Build Back Better Framework states that preschool in the United States costs about eight thousand six hundred dollars per year. Um, it's not clear what that estimate is based on. Um, but it is worth noting that here in Oregon, our Preschool Promise program, that's our state program, spends thirteen thousand dollars per year on each preschool promise slot, which is pretty comparable to what we spend on K-12 education. Um, it's also worth noting that the Head Start program spends about eighteen thousand dollars per year with robust wraparound services. It's also worth noting that both of those programs are nine-month programs um with a mix of full-day and half-day slots. So just kind of knowing that and knowing what the task force is thinking about is a truly bold and ambitious vision of what universal preschool can and should be in this community. It leads us to believe that getting to truly universal quality preschool for all three and four-year-olds, which means expanding slots, compensating and training teachers while developing the facilities that we need, having a real system for preschool, is gonna take a uh shared federal, state, and local effort. Um, the good news, I think, is that if, and yes, right now it's a big if, but if the federal government is able to pick up a large portion of that cost, the local share that's needed to make this happen will be much less than without the federal support. Um, once the bill passes, if it passes, I, and once we're able to understand what Oregon's allocation is likely to be from that funding, we'll be able to run the numbers. Um, we're currently working on revenue and cost estimates for Washington County. We just, we have this big X factor of what, if anything, will happen with Build Back Better. Once we have that information, we'll be able to run the numbers and really have a much clearer understanding of um how much revenue is needed, what the cost estimate is, how many slots might the feds be picking up? So there's questions there, but we're on the precipice of being able to answer them. And I think what I want to leave you all with is you think about all of this, um, is that Washington County and you as leader, the leaders of Washington County are really well-positioned to to chart this path, to lead the way um in making this incredible opportunity come true for so many thousands of children in your community. Um, and the work that the task force has done so far and will continue to do is really to provide you as leaders and and the community as a whole with a smart, strategic, thoughtful framework to get ultimately to universal preschool and to execute it really well. And so it's an honor to have shared all this with you. Um, Sarah and I are happy to take questions and can't wait to have some dialogue with you here today.
That was a marvelous overview and an update. Thank you, Sarah and Megan. Commissioners, thoughts and questions? Go ahead, Vice Chair Trese.
I, I just wanted to give a quick review of kind of where we've been as a county too, because I think it'd be helpful for other commissioners just to remember what the context is here. Uh, we, we had a a request for uh from the Washington County Kids Organization that did not pass to put a measure on the ballot. And then based on that situation, I had continued conversations with Katie Riley and Susan Bender Phelps, meeting with all of the mayors that didn't support that program initially to try to come to a common ground. And in those discussions, we met with several members of this organization, of David Williams and others, who really morphed kind of the look at what, what, what we were doing, moved it toward the universal preschool type of approach for, for this particular portion. So I just wanted to give you that timeframe and kind of where my involvement has been. And as I mentioned to you early on, um, this year, childcare was going to be and child, early childhood education would be a priority of mine. So that's the common thread for me.
If I could just add to that, uh, the principals involved with the ask uh for the after-school program uh that Commissioner Trese was referring to. So Katie Riley, Susan Bender Phelps, uh, Tom Hughes, were very disappointed at where we ended up uh as a board with our decision-making. Um, and they're still pushing onward with Washington County Kids uh so that they've actually expanded it a little bit, saying we're, or at least Katie and Susan Bender Phelps, we're agnostic uh about after-school or preschool. We just want better outcomes for kids. Uh, or at least that's what's been shared in uh the briefings with me. Uh, but clearly, there is momentum with uh all of the, the parties that uh Megan and Sarah have referred to. So Commissioners Fai, Rogers, and Willie, any questions or thoughts?
Um, while you have the mic, actually, Chair Harrington, both you and Commissioner Trese sort of talked about it this morning, um, initiative with Mayor Lacy Beatty. How does that relate to all of this? I feel like everyone is doing their own thing. And what we're talking about is kids, so I'm just wondering if you could throw that in there. Um, and I appreciate the explanation you did, Commissioner Trese, um, because I, I had questions about that.
So there is uh the immediate problem, and there are uh longer-term timeframes. So the summit that was convened last uh Wednesday evening by Mayor Beatty, as uh I mentioned, included elected officials from the Beaverton School Board, the Twalton Hills Park and Rec District, uh, Mayor Beatty and myself. And they were talking about how to cover the whole school day, the whole school year, and uh more specifically, how they could seek funding to put together programs that would be offered as early as spring of 2022. So just four-plus months away in order to be operational no later than the fall school year in 2022. So um, that's just what, what funding such as ARPA may be available now to increase access. And we're doing that work already, or some of that work already, with the, both the CRF funds and the arbitrage one dollars, where we've been working primarily to expand the home-based healthcare providers and expanding their capacity, as well as increasing the number of licensed childcare providers. So there, it's an expansive problem. Uh, this preschool-for-all proposal is a uh more comprehensive and longer-term solution as we have heard described today.
I'd also add that um people are, to, to your point, Commissioner Fai, Mayor Beatty sits on both of these, and this is really an educational-based program. It's really looking at uh starting that, starting uh education at that three-to-four-year-old level and bringing them along. The other program was how do we a- address childcare needs in relationship to getting women back into the workforce and economic development to make sure that our businesses can stay healthy? So the, that, that's a, a, a little difference as well. Is that, by the way, I defer to both Megan and Sarah on, on that description as well.
Well, the other difference we failed to mention is that what Sarah and Megan are here to talk about is for Washington County-wide, and that summit of last week was simply Beaverton School District, THPRD, City of Beaverton. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add on that specific, uh, but there, but there's lots of involvement from the Beaverton School District and from Mayor Beatty as well. So hopefully, we're integrating really nicely. Lots of local districts are having those conversations right now. You know, what can we do to create some wraparound services in light of the pandemic and the toll that's taken academically and on students' social and emotional well-being? So it's great to hear that Beaverton's looking at that. This would create, um, like Commissioner Trese mentioned, universal preschool, so for three and four-year-olds, um, universally across the county. So similar, but a little different, yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, what a, uh, what a great presentation. I mean, obviously, I have not been uh involved in the groundwork on this, so um, so this is all good information. Um, before I get to, because you know, uh, Roya and I are bean counters, so we're gonna ask a lot of bean counter questions here. But um, you, you put on your, one of your slides that suspensions and expulsions are not allowed. And I think I understand why you would want that. But at the same time, um, a friend of ours granddaughter is actually a teacher, and um she's moved up to like the third grade now or something like that. But when she was, when she was a kindergarten and first-grade teacher, um, because of these kinds of requirements, she had, um, many of the students in the class um didn't get the attention that they needed because she had to focus on a couple of kids that had some uh mental disabilities and um, and basically controlled what she did throughout the course of her day's work. So when you say this, I would much prefer, rather than saying they are not allowed, but there would be some sort of special um consideration. I mean, we don't want, we're just not gonna say, okay, this kid is disrupting the entire classroom, and so it's out, you know? But there is something between that and requiring them to stay in the classroom. So I'd like to see something in the middle there that, that helps the, the teacher or the assistants that are doing this. So um, a- again, so one or two children don't dominate the entire day's uh activities, and the rest of the kids kind of get the short end of the stick.
Yeah, I can speak to that a bit, and then Sarah, perhaps you can as well, since you all run early childhood special education. Um, I think you're making an important point, right? If we're gonna have a requirement that keeps kids from being suspended or expelled from a program, it has to also come with the support. Um, so one recommendation I didn't put on the slide, because it's in the leads, is that the, you have to have an appropriate adult-to-child ratio. So it's recommended that there's a teacher and two assistants, or a teacher, an assistant, and an aide, um, which helps in a lot of ways, because it also, in addition to making sure that which helps in a lot of ways, because it also, in addition to making sure that children's support needs can be met, it also ensures that teachers can do things like go to the bathroom and eat lunch during the day without being out of ratio. So I want to both acknowledge that what you're saying is very true. I mean, I saw this when I was the administrator in Beaverton, and we did fully-inclusive special education classrooms. And you do get kiddos, especially at the start of the year, who have really big support needs. So you have to have adequate staffing and adequate expertise to support them. And you may run into a situation where the specific, like, classroom that the child is in isn't necessarily meeting their support needs. What we don't want to, maybe they need to find a placement for them with someone with more training. But we don't want to see his kids just kicked out of preschool-for-all with no place to go. Sarah's organization runs several of these kind of special education-inclusive classrooms versus having specialized pull-out classrooms. So Sarah, you might be able to speak to it as well. Implementing this recommendation requires like real thought and real attention to the need of the child, their family, and the people working in the classroom with the child to make it work.
Yeah, and I would just add that those specialized situations, it is our job as the ESD to do the professional development, the technical assistance, and push in with the coaching so that the student, the family, and the providers in those situations are learning how to be successful with that child. That really is what our role is currently. There's just not enough preschool slots to push into right now for those children. We also do run, and we would continue to run, some highly, highly specialized programs for kids who are really impacted, usually with autism, but who need a different set of educational, a different educational day. So those programs would continue to be offered, and hopefully, right, if there's more, if they truly reach a universal preschool, we'd be able to offer more of those slots because the other kids who we serve would have an opportunity to benefit through the universal preschool program. So it is our, it is our job as the ESD to help ensure that provider can be successful with those students, and that that student and the family can be successful in that setting, and to offer alternative settings if it truly is not a good match.
Yeah, I get that. And I completely agree with that. And I, like I said, I wasn't advocating that you're either in or you're out. And so maybe modifying that very strong sentence there into something that more actually reflects what you just told me. So anyways, just, again, semantics, but that's a pretty strong statement. In regards to, in regards to the cost, I heard you toss out a whole bunch of numbers, eighty-six hundred, thirteen thousand, eighteen thousand, all of those kinds of things. How many kids do we think we will need to serve? Three- and four-year-olds in Washington County? Do we have any idea?
I have my cheat sheet, Sarah, if that helps. With the, with, I always, when I'm throwing out numbers in public meetings, say I reserve the right to fact-check myself. So I'll go back and double-check this, and if I'm off by a couple hundred, we'll circle back with you. First of all, when we're talking about universal preschool, what we see from other jurisdictions is that you can assume like market saturation is eighty to ninety percent. A hundred percent of families are not going to choose to have their child in preschool. So you're looking at needing like ten thousand to eleven thousand-ish more slots. Eighty percent would be ten thousand three hundred and thirty-nine, ninety percent would be eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-one for three- and four-year-olds. Again, with my little footnote that I reserve the right to fact-check that and send it to your board, your board administrator after the meeting.
I won't hold you specifically to that. I just needed to have a general idea. Because I think you're exactly correct. You know, it's not going to be a hundred percent. And so, so, and ten thousand dollars, ten thousand kids is, that's a good enough number for me. And again, I'm not going to run numbers on this. It's just, so when we're talking about ten thousand kids, and we're talking about ten thousand dollars a year per kid, you can do the math pretty quick on that. Now, the one thing that I always struggled with Katie Riley's program was they would throw out a tax rate that was going to generate about twenty-one or twenty-two million dollars, but they couldn't specifically say what exactly they were going to do with that money. So I'm happy to see that you are actually backing into that number because ten thousand kids and ten thousand dollars or thirteen thousand dollars or whatever it is, at least you have a number, and then you can work into, okay, what, that's our bogey. So what do we have to do to get to that? Having said that, we saw the, the here-together shelter housing, I guess is the better term, go the exactly the same way you're going here as far as taxing the high-income taxpayers and payroll taxes. And at some point in time, we've got to come up with a better solution to doing this because we just can't go to the same well all the time. I'm also more of an advocate of of sharing the burden. And it doesn't have to be proportionately, or it doesn't have to be equally, or whatever the case is. But I really believe that it's better if there is some, like I said, sharing of that burden. So there, and again, people that are making really, really little bets of money, that would be an exception to this. But again, spreading that out over a much bigger landscape than just the high-income taxpayer. And a payroll tax, you know, you talk about a payroll tax, is that a payroll tax on the employee? Is that a payroll tax on the employer? How does that work? There's always that burden of accountability on the employer, even if it is just on the employee. So, yeah, I'll be really interested to see how all these numbers add up, and you bring that back to us. But conceptually, I completely agree, the importance of getting children in education very, very early will reap huge benefits. And so I'm all in with that. Just some of these other things are a little bit cumbersome to me.
Yeah, I appreciate those questions, Commissioner Willie. And it's going to be important. As we laid out in the timeline slide, we're, the policy recommendations are forming up now. And so we simultaneously have Eco Northwest working on a cost model as the policy recommendations are forming up. So we know how much would it cost, right? If you want, making a decision like it's for all three- and four-year-olds is a direction, right? Making a decision that it's mixed delivery is going to cost something different than if you just did half-day programs, right? In certain settings. So once all those decisions are made, we'll get the final cost model from Eco Northwest. The back of the napkin is something we've done, just like what you did, right? You don't get to a hundred million dollars easily with a property tax increase, and there's lots of reasons why we're not going to go that route. The two mechanisms that get you there that we're aware of are the ones that you alluded to. That pre-referral campaign steering committee would dive into the details of that. I think, I think there's a lot to work through that has not yet been decided. And with the flexibility of, if there are federal or state funding that comes through, we could adjust downwards what we need to raise locally. So we can draft. You know, if it gets to the point of putting pen to paper on a ballot measure, we'll have some good opportunities where you could write that down, so it could be adjusted downwards if state or local, state or federal funding comes through. And I think we just need to stay close as we move into the more details on the funding mechanism conversation. I would add on the numbers of kids, that the population of kids zero to five is growing. So while we have about ten thousand that we would need right now, when you look at ten years from now, we're probably going to have closer to twenty thousand kids altogether. And so then you take eighty to ninety percent of those kids. So it is a program that would need to grow over time. So that's another thing to consider, that that's not a stagnant group, that that number is continuing to grow as the population grows. So just an important adjustment, because the hundred million won't stay a hundred million ten years out, even if all other costs stayed the same. So there'll just be more kids in that age group. But appreciate your support at the high level for the high-level concepts, because it is something that, I don't know, you know, you look at other wealthy countries that have invested very differently in this age group in a way that our country never has. And it just leaves a lot of parents and providers, but also educators, really stumbling to understand why. And if there's something we can do about it locally, it's a pretty wonderful opportunity.
Commissioner Rogers, is there anything that you want to share with Sarah and Meghan today?
I'm not so sure. I have a lot. I appreciate your passion. No one doubts the value of education. Heaven knows, all of us wouldn't be in the positions we're in if we hadn't done that. I still have the same reservations, honestly, as I had the last time this project came. And that is that while a good program, we have to balance so many different needs. One of them is to retain business in the state and retain jobs. And frankly, there's a reason why Texas, Arizona, and other states are growing much more rapidly right now, and their economies are much better than ours. We can't, and Jerry pointed out, we can't keep going to the same mechanism and saying, well, you, you who are wealthy, or wealthier, or whatever that means, it means something different to everybody, will continue to pay. They won't do it. And I have told this board, and they can disagree, and you can disagree with me, that we're chasing a lot of people out of the state, and we're going to do more. So we've got to find a medium, a happy medium, where they'll continue to want to stay here and prosper and grow jobs. So, though I love your program, and I love having the idea of everyone having all those opportunities, I question the tax policy. I do a whole bunch. So that's one issue I have. The other issue that Jerry brought up was a minor one. I had both a cousin and a brother in education, and they both left for the very reasons he said. They were dealing with classrooms that were so diversified that they couldn't spend the time they thought was necessary to teach kids what they needed to be taught. So I know that's a function of our modern educational system, but it does provide some real challenges. So I would say to you, keep up the good work. I like the message. I certainly like the idea. I question that if somebody doesn't, we say in the business world, if you don't have any skin in the game, you maybe don't care as much, and you're not quite as passionate about, about the idea than if you pay a little bit. And so I like that everybody pays something weighted, of course, based upon their ability to pay. But I like that somebody has some involvement so that they appreciate it. I guess that's a function of my age and upbringing. We all said that you, you work hard, and you might not have as much as anybody else, but you, you make a contribution. Kennedy, during my era, said it best, you know, when he had his great line, that, by the way, he stole from a Greek philosopher, but that's okay. You know, don't ask what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. I think it has a lot of applications in what we, we believe that we all should put our elbows and our shoulders to the wheel and turn. So if I sound like a downer, I don't mean to. I do like what's going on. I just don't like the idea that we all don't have a little bit of skin in the game and that we don't continue to look at the easy sources. I understand why you do it, but it's, it's certainly got some other implications. So counties have a whole bunch of different constituents. Education and families are one, elderly is another one, business is another one, and you're trying to find a perfect balance. I would hope that you could do that for us so that we could always be a winner with everybody. That would be really, really nice. I would applaud you profusely. But thanks for your hard work every minute.
Yeah, Commissioner Rogers, we appreciate that. We'll keep looking for a way to thread that needle perfectly. I would say that we are starting to do some pretty intense outreach to the business community, both for the associations, but individual business organizations as well. And that pre-referral campaign committee will set a table that looks a little different than the table that was set on the policy recommendations, will be more comprehensive to include the business community in a really vocal way. So hear you on the concern. It is a political reality and something that we're very much aware of, and appreciate you raising it.
Commissioner Fai, before we finish this topic, is there, are there any other questions or comments you would like to contribute?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Great job, Sarah and Meghan. While I myself believe the rhetoric of tax the rich, which is opposite of what Commissioner Rogers just said, I too am a little confused about, like, how do we align everything? Like, the Mayor Beaverton initiative, and then Katie Riley's initiative, and then preschool-for-all, and then in the midst of it, give, you know, low-income communities leaders the opportunity to lead this project and center their voices upfront. So I'm really looking forward to seeing how that will play out so that, you know, we're I'm, my job, sort of, right now as a, somebody with visibility, I want to make sure that, you know, we're not doing things for communities of color, for low-income communities, but we're bringing them along because I believe people who are closest to the problem are also closest to the solution. So I set that back in February when we met to really give leaders of color leadership opportunities to lead this initiative for their communities, and look forward to how everyone aligns the, all the initiatives that are out there that are impacting for kids. Great presentation. I appreciate the direction you're going for, and look forward to what the, the economic analysis come out to be.
Thank you, Commissioner Fai. I appreciate that. And I, I know there's not time, so I won't respond in great, great depth. But we'll definitely keep coming back to the commission as the policy recommendations conclude that, you know, we can't have everybody here present to you all. Obviously, this would go on forever and ever. But the table that was set, I think for those who've been involved, truly participatory, and the makeup of that committee has been, I think, really reflective of the community that we serve. And so, you know, the leadership of the task force was not able to be here today. You got Meghan and me instead. But I think, you know, we could get you in contact with some of the folks who've been participating in the task force and the work groups, because I think people would say the experience has been one, really grounded in the community needs, and specifically, the community of providers and parents who are, you know, who are running on the backside right now. So happy to keep getting you more great information about how that involvement has looked.
And I won't speak for Commissioner Treese, but I've been really pleased with the involvement of our lower-income and historically disadvantaged leaders and providers in this effort. It's really been impressive. So thank you. And that's just for the task force, right? I'm not even reflecting the work that's gone into all the work groups and the focus groups. I've just benefited from the task force participatory method as well as, and presence, as well as the report-outs. So. Any last thoughts from you, Sarah, Meghan, or Commissioner Treese before we call it a day on this topic? Thank you again for coming and presenting a really great, comprehensive overview of the problem set, where things stand, and where we have to go. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So Commissioners, we have a number of topics, three different topics to come back to. Two are on appointments to different committees that should each be somewhat short, ten minutes each, and then a half-hour presentation on misstep. We've been going since one o'clock. Would you prefer a short break here for ten, fifteen minutes, and then come back?
Chair, I have a, I have a four o'clock hard stop. So we can get through the first two, and then if we don't get through the third one, then I can catch up a little bit on that one. So, but I do have a four o'clock hard stop.
Yeah, I've got a hard stop at about four, four-ten myself today. So rather unusual for me. But, so how about if we just take a break till three fifteen and then get going? Okay, great. See you in a bit. See you in a bit. Hey Erin, I was surprised that in the, the summary for Melissa Laird, it doesn't identify that she's part of the ESPD Budget Committee.
I was, I was curious about that, too. I actually meant to go in and check, check the updated membership on that, but.
I just think we need, I don't know if the team is looking at how we, I know they used to use Granicus for generating this stuff, but we have a lot of people who are on multiple committees, and it, there's multiple intersection points. And I don't know if we have in our system ways to keep track of that.
It's a good question. I know they're looking a lot at the Granicus system and the capacity around the data and measuring that, so I think that's something to look at.
Okay, folks, well, it's 3:17. We'll get going. We have a quorum of four of us now, so we'll move on to reviewing the applications and recommendations for appointment to the Public Safety Coordinating Council. And with us, we have Assistant County Administrator Erin Calvert, and her ACA portfolio includes all things public safety.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon, and good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. For the record, I'm Erin Calvert with the County Administrative Office. And for the purpose of this work session, I'm also the staff liaison to the Public Safety Coordinating Council. And as mentioned, I'm here to talk with you about the applicants and the recommendations for appointments to the current and upcoming vacancies. Your packet includes the current slate of applicants, the membership matrix of the applicant profiles, the bylaws that were adopted by the board in July of 2020, and of course, the cover sheet with the updated information on the process and the recommendations. In summary, and as a brief recap, I was last before you at a work session in June of this year when the PSCC recommended two lay community member appointments to start on July 1st. Your board appointed both members at a subsequent business meeting, but unfortunately, one of those appointees resigned the following month just due to his work schedule and all other volunteer and community engagement demands that he had. So that left one immediate vacancy. And then we knew ahead of the fall recruitment period that two more vacancies would become available due to terms ending December 31st. So one of those was a lay community member, and the other position was a representative from a victim-serving agency. During the recruitment period of September 21st through November 2nd, the PSCC received five applications. One of those was for the victim-serving agency, and the other four were for lay community members. Chair Lindsay Coppinger convened an interview panel, which included Commissioner Willie, and those interviews took place via Zoom on November 8th. The panel brought unanimous recommendations to the council during our meeting on November 19th. And then during that meeting, the council endorsed those recommendations to proceed to your board. So there were five pretty amazing individuals that all brought strengths to the interview and would be assets and valuable members to the Public Safety Coordinating Council. But I do want to be transparent with the board that while we believe we found two individuals who will bring something new and very different to the council, despite the notices and notifications from the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, as well as the real intentional focus from the council to work with community partners and individuals from diverse communities, we did not get the racial and ethnic diversity that we had hoped to invite to participate. And so there were some strong efforts to recruit, and the council believes those relationships just need to continue to be developed and strengthened with community partners and individuals so that we can garner more interest and inclusion. And this was part of the discussion during the council meeting on the 19th that I just wanted to share with the board. During that meeting, though, the board did vote, or excuse me, the council did vote to proceed with the following appointments. So for the victim-serving agency, the PSCC is asking that you appoint Jenny Gilmore-Robinson. She's the Executive Director of CARES Northwest. Ms. Robinson, Ms. Gilmore-Robinson is currently filling this position as the interim after the prior executive director retired earlier during this year. Ms. Gilmore-Robinson brings a strong skill set for victim services and advocacy, trauma-informed care. She has extensive EDI awareness and training, and she and CARES Northwest are an excellent community partner. Ms. Gilmore-Robinson identifies as female and white. For the lay community member applicants, the council is recommending the first appointment for Melissa Laird. Ms. Laird is a resident of District 2. She's very actively involved in her community and is committed to bringing that voice to the council. She's particularly interested in bringing the perspective of community livability, homelessness, car thefts, and neighborhood safety to the council. She's interested in the relationship that is needed among public safety and justice agencies and county residents to develop best practices in local, for local policy. She has over 23 years of experience in leadership and management across a, across a wide breadth of business marketing and manufacturing experiences, and she also volunteers at the Oregon Humane Society. Ms. Laird has first experience in other cultures and understands working through issues and differences in diverse cultures, and she did not identify her race ethnicity on the application. The second recommendation is for Gary Dozier. Mr. Dozier is a resident of District 3. He's active in his own community in Tigard, as well as a large and diverse faith community in Beaverton. As a pastor, he would bring a different community voice and experience to the council. Mr. Dozier has worked closely with the Washington County Sheriff's Office and Beaverton Police Department for 12 years to connect those agencies with his church and community to better understand and support the work. He leads an annual community event with over 1,000 people gathering to honor the first responders in Washington County in the metro area. And this event has created many opportunities for partnerships among the agencies and community members. Mr. Dozier has served in other capacities, doing weekly teachings in the jail and as a rescue mission teacher in a juvenile correction center, and he identifies as male and white. So if the board is satisfied with this recommendation, just given the end of the year meeting schedule, we actually have this on the docket for next Tuesday, the 14th, and I'm happy to answer any question.
Commissioners, any questions? I'll just say, I'll just share that through conversations that I've had with different individuals from different cultural backgrounds is part of what they've been considering at looking at opportunities for this is when the councils meet, the time requirements of that, but also what is the makeup of the current committees? And feeling that the current atmosphere is not necessarily a welcoming atmosphere, which is certainly feedback that is necessary to hear, but also sometimes hard to hear. You know, it is, while we have a legislative agenda we were just talking about, about supporting efforts to improve social justice and racial justice outcomes, we don't necessarily have the range of voices in, across all of our boards and commissions in that arena to support that, which is not to say that we won't achieve it without such representation and voices. But I, I am recognizing what you've said here, Ms. Calvert, about our, our current composition as well as if we move forward with this roster, where we would end up through the, at least the end of 2022 and looking into the end of 2023. And we just have more work to do. The pragmatic viewpoint as usual, but we'll keep striving, so. Seeing no commissioner comments, I guess that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for checking in. Next, we'll move on to another committee, this one being the Planning Commission with Mr. Roberts.
Before, excuse me, just a minute, Chair. Before, before we, before we move on, could I, I'm thinking about those of us that sit on outside boards. I sit on Central Cultural, for example. And I think that I, I need to be able to take back to Central Cultural Board meetings, for example, slates of openings, slates opportunities. And I'm, I'm not currently doing that at that board, but I think it's a role that I should, should fill in that, in that environment so that, and I, while I respect the outreach that Erin talked about, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to do that outreach as well, in whatever capacities we can. So I'm just putting that out there that I will, in, into the future, be looking at what the openings are. Going to ask Megan to help me so that I continually report back in, in that group particularly, what's happening and, and talk about it so that we, you know, we have every opportunity. And whatever groups that we work with, I would encourage all of us to do the same type of thing. Am I preaching to the choir?
I think we've touched on it before.
Sorry.
That's okay. Our work continues. Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Stephen Roberts, Land Use and Transportation Director, and I'm here with Teresa Churniak and Todd Borkowitz, as well as Andy Back, all from our Planning and Development Services Division. We're here to talk about potential appointments to the Planning Commission. And as with the previous discussion, we're also planning to bring this back to your board for action one week from today, December 14th. So with that, I'll turn to, I believe Todd is going to walk us through, and then we'll all be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you, Stephen. So good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Todd Borkowitz, Associate Planner in Community Planning with the Department of Land Use and Transportation. So we're here today to present candidates for consideration for two Planning Commission positions, one for District 1, the other for District 4. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, the Planning Commission is a nine-member body appointed by the board that advises on land use and transportation planning issues. Members are residents of various geographic areas of the county, and appointments are staggered so that two or three terms expire each year. Next slide, please. As a, one full-term District 1 vacancy would be effective January 31st, 2022. The position is currently held by Commissioner Rachel Maury-Pedot, who is seeking reappointment. The candidate would be eligible to serve two four-year terms. For District 4, there is one midterm vacancy effective immediately and expiring January 31st, 2022. There would then be one full-term vacancy for this position effective at that time. The position was previously held by Benjamin Stadleman. The candidate would be eligible to serve the remainder of the current term and two four-year terms. Next slide, please. Eligible candidates for District 1 include Rachel Maury-Pedot, two candidates who reside in District 1, and 13 out-of-district applicants. As a reminder, the board may also consider out-of-district applicants and has done so previously as highlighted in attachment B. Next slide, please. Eligible candidates for District, for District 4 include three candidates who reside in District 4 and 11 out-of-district applicants. Please note that Jason Tunsil, who's listed here, has since withdrawn his application for consideration. Next slide. So here's a map of where Planning Commissioners, where Planning Commission members reside, as shown in blue, and where Planning Commission applicants reside, shown in magenta. The County Administrative Office solicited applications for the Planning Commission membership. Staff reviewed applicant materials and conducted brief phone interviews with each candidate. The agenda contained information about each candidate, and we're happy to go through each of those to answer any questions that the board has. Next slide, please. So staff recommends reappointment of Commissioner Maury-Pedot for a four-year term for January 31st, 2022 through January 31st, 2026. We ask today that the board review and consider the candidates for District 1 and District 4, provide direction to staff on these appointments. And if you are ready to move forward with the appointments, authorize an action item for the December 14th board meeting to select and appoint candidates. Next slide. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions that the board has. Thank you.
Why don't we start with Commissioner Willie, as the vacant position is District 4? And he mentioned earlier that he's interviewed at least four people.
I have that. The, and the four people that are listed.
The and the four people that are listed on the schedule that's presented there, Yosinia Aguilar, Kimberly Culbertson, Lynette Hoffler, and Jason, Jason's name dropped off. And LUT staff recommended that I interview, consider Morgan Will, even though he lives in District Two because of his experience. So I interviewed all four of those people and then had follow-up conversation with LUT staff. And there are some Morgan Will is by far the most experienced of the four. But I didn't want to just base my decision solely on that. And it and I reached out to Commissioner Teresa on if it was okay if I would consider one of her applicants from District Two, and that was that was fine with her. So after having further conversation with LUT staff, I've decided that I would recommend we appoint Morgan Will. And again, he's got a lot of experience in this. The other three did not have any experience with that. That doesn't mean that they couldn't be given some opportunity to learn it, but we do have some significant issues coming down the pike in the Planning Commission. And felt like we needed to put someone in there that had some significant experience. So. Yeah, as to back up just a little bit, Lynette Hoffler did have some experience with actually attending Planning Commission meetings, not at the county level, but at at their city level. But Morgan Will by far has the most experience, and so that is who I am recommending we appoint to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Are there any Commissioner thoughts or questions?
I'm happy with the staff recommendation for District One.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. I don't disagree with the choices that each of you have made, given what you've what you've said and done. And by comparison, as Chair, I only have one opportunity for appointment. And that reflects my my views that I think we need to continue to diversify the the skill set that we're looking for in our Planning Commissioners. Unlike with city planning commissions, the Washington County Planning Commission really very rarely deals with development planning review and deals a lot more with reviewing plans such as, you know, legislation such as we were talking about earlier with transportation planning, as well as with other other legislation, policy, uh, level work that helps our community be better prepared for multiple income levels, mixed diversity. You know, and I've specifically been thinking about with House Bill two thousand and one and how we make sure that we continue to diversify the Planning Commission so that our community is more successful overall in being more welcoming and having the policy context that better supports the range of diversity. But like I said, that's just what I'm looking for as one member of five. And I have no reason to not support the decision-making of of the four of you.
Well, and I think just, you know, just to actually support what you just said, Chair. Pam and I were talking to Stephen yesterday about could we because quite frankly, all three of these other candidates over a period of time, I believe, could fill the Planning Commission responsibilities. They just need to get some some opportunity to experience to actually attend these meetings and to see what information they need and experience they need to to be a good planning commissioner. And so I I think that's the only way, quite frankly, I mean, Planning Commission is probably the only commission that I would never apply for because it can get into some very deep complexities and a ton of homework. I mean, I've said this before, my son-in-law is on the Planning Commission at Sherwood, and he spends hours studying the material. So so I I think we would need to actually, if we wanted to make turn this corner and get it to where you're talking about, Chair, we we might have to consider what a what an internship program would look like for these positions.
Yeah, I agree. The big the biggest thing is ensuring that people are willing to put the time in. And I think part of that means that we have to start being clear about that expectation.
Oh, it was in my interviews. I can say that that was, we we dealt on that quite a bit because obviously my last appointment last spring experienced that a little bit more intensely than I think he anticipated. So that was definitely one of the points of the conversation.
But I know I've I've heard frustration over, we have people who are applying, but they're not getting appointed. But I don't think while that time commitment is being used as a part of a requirement through the interviewing process, it's not being made clear in the application process. That's that's just something I'm concerned that we're not being clear on. That's all. So I think we do have limited time. I think we've heard Commissioner willingness to move forward with these appointments. Commissioner Teresa, do you have something you feel you need to add today versus at our meeting?
No, I I do quickly, and that is, I think that as we list what the districts are, I think it's going to look like District Two has got, you know, a lot more Planning Commissioners, and I think we should consider who they are representing and who made the appointment somehow in this in this matrix. That's it.
And I think the answer right now is that's the same limitation we've been dealing with for our three years. It's all tied in with the Granicus system that is used to make these tables, so on and so forth. So alrighty, that's it for this item. Thank you for joining us, staff. And we'll move on then to Item Seven, also related to land use and transportation.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we will be giving you one of our nearly monthly updates on the status of the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, twenty-three to twenty-eight Funding Allocation Work Program. And I've got with me Aaron Wardell from our Long Range Transportation Planning Group is going to do the majority of the presentation. And then Chris Steffabach, our Senior Policy Analyst, will kick us off. And we also have John L. Bell, who's our consultant that will be joining us as well. And I know we have limited time this afternoon. I would just note that we have scheduled some briefings with Commissioners over the next week and a half or so. And so if if there are questions and and things that we're not able to get to today, we certainly would be happy to take those up with you as as we have opportunities. So thank you. Aaron.
Thank you, Stephen. I think Chris was going to do the introduction.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
There, I was in that in-between space, interstitial when you get transported to panelist. Okay. So thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Good to be here again as we're making progress on the misstep twenty-three, twenty-eight funding allocation process. So today we have, we heard that you have hard stops at four. We think we can be pretty brief. Today, we want to share with you the summary of the comments we heard through our discussions with the nine city councils and the input from the WCC members that we met with individually on the misstep background, the funding allocation work plan. This is something you've asked for before, as have the WCC, and we waited till we had our final City Council presentation in November, and there is a written summary of this in your packet. We also want to share the WCCC's recommendation and seek your direction on the project eligibility criteria, as well as the amendments to the System of Countywide Interest map. And then finally, we will preview the draft equity framework with John L. Bell. Here are consultant espousal strategies and seek support to keep moving forward with this framework and the community engagement plan, which we will bring back to you in January, the January eleventh meeting. So I'm going to turn this over to Aaron Wardell and John L. Bell to go through this. And then we maybe add a few comments at the end.
Thank you, Chris. I'm Aaron Wardell, Principal Transportation Planner. Can we go to the next slide, please? And actually, the next one, because Chris covered our agenda for today. So the first item we wanted to talk about is the briefing memo that is in your packet for today. It is a summary of the individual briefings that we held with our County Coordinating Committee members and city councils. Through these briefings, we heard clear support for the Major Street Transportation Improvement Program and a lot of support for continued city-county partnership as we work to build our transportation system. We heard very clear support for continuing the Opportunity Fund, which allows all of our jurisdictions to leverage misstep funds in order to apply for competitive grants for projects. We heard a lot of support for continuing the geographic balance of the program and making sure that the dollars are spread throughout the county. We also heard support for helping county staff with our engagement efforts and being able to work through city staff and existing community committees. So that's something that we'll be working towards. And we heard support for updating the System of Countywide Interest map to reflect plan changes and current conditions. And that's something that we'll talk about in the next couple of slides. We also heard that there are many needs in our system, and the needs that we heard a lot about in these briefings were sidewalk infill, pedestrian crossings, and the need to improve our existing roads up to urban standards. Next slide. So I want to move into talking about the System of Countywide Interest. You've seen this map before. This is the map of the collectors and arterials that are eligible for misstep funding. Presence on the map does not mean that a facility is guaranteed misstep funding or that it's ranked for misstep funding. It just means that it is eligible for funding. Next slide. So we put out a call for map updates to the County Coordinating Committee's Technical Advisory Committee, and we've talked about this before. We were quite frankly surprised to receive thirty-one proposed map updates from the cities because we didn't think that the map was quite that out of date with plan with existing plans. So staff developed some criteria really quickly to help us review these thirty-one proposed updates. And our staff review included the criteria that's added here on the slide. Is it adopted in a plan? Is the road an arterial or a collector? And we did have proposals that were not adopted into plans and that were not classified as arterials or collectors. Does it serve multiple jurisdictions, which to us is an indicator of the regional significance of that facility? What are the traffic counts, trying to give us an idea of how how used that facility is, particularly in the case of a collector facility? Do we have forecasted traffic volumes to give us an understanding of future demand for this facility? Is it serving a regional function that we haven't captured through some of these other criteria? And then is it identified on the regional bike network map in the regional transportation system plan? So we applied that to these thirty-one proposed updates. Next slide. And that led staff to support the recommendation of seven map updates, which we took back to the County Coordinating Committee's TAC. They recommended it to the County Coordinating Committee, and the Coordinating Committee supported staff's recommendation. So they agreed with our recommendation. So that would add these additional facilities, Lombard Street in Beaverton, a segment of Highway forty-seven, Huffman Street in Hillsborough, Blanton Street, which was a county proposal, Barrows Road, which was proposed by both Tigard and Beaverton, Ice Age Drive, proposed by Sherwood. And then Hillsborough actually asked us to remove a couple of facilities from that because they did not feel like they truly met the criteria of being a regional facility. So we agreed with that proposal. Next slide. So this shows on the map where we are proposing to make these changes. And again, this is reflecting the county staff recommendation and the WCCC recommendations. So you can see where these additional collector and arterial facilities are, as well as the proposed collector removals from City of Hillsborough. Next slide. So we had a really robust discussion about this with both the TAC and the WCCC. We heard support for broadening the scope of what is included on the map, and in particular, a lot of support for considering additional collector facilities, particularly collectors that are in the town center, town centers. But at the same time, as we heard that feedback, we also heard a lot of support for keeping the focus really on major streets, recognizing the amount of need that's already represented on this map and how much of a backlog of improvements we have in the county. So definitely heard both of those messages loud and clear. There was a really good discussion as well about potential uses for this map beyond just misstep eligibility, thinking about, is this something that we could use when there is, you know, other funding sources available? When there's discussions at the regional level about things like emergency transportation routes? And so we had a really good discussion about the possibility for doing that. The WCCC requested that county staff share all thirty-one of the proposed map updates with the board. And so we've done that. That's included in your packet today. And the WCCC requested that county staff bring it back for further discussion and that we not wait until the next time we are ready to do this allocation. But we bring forward that discussion in the interim so that we can have this more robust discussion about what this map could actually be. So we have drafted up some proposed text for the Long Range Planning Work Program for your board to consider if that's something you would like to direct staff to do. Next slide. So in addition to recommending those changes to the map, WCCC recommended that we continue to use this eligibility criteria, which is the draft criteria that we started with. Again, just saying, these are projects that are eligible for misstep funds, not committing funds, not ranking them. But the projects must meet multimodal need. They must be on that map. They must rank as a high local priority, meaning they're adopted into a plan document, and that the program overall must be geographically and financially balanced. Oh, it looks like we just jumped ahead to the next slide, which is fine. I want to pause here and see if there are any questions on the eligibility criteria or the map or the briefings before I turn it over to John L. Okay, hearing none. Next slide, please. With that, I would like to turn it over to John L., who was going to talk us through a little bit more detail about our equity framework and our engagement plan. We've been working on developing these documents to share with you, and we will be bringing the drafts to the briefings that we have in the next couple of weeks. So you'll be able to see them in formation and then bring them back to January eleventh and a more as a more finished product for our work session then. Today, what we'd like to do is get your direction on continuing to develop them after you've heard this overview. So with that, John L., go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Aaron. Chair Harrington, members of the board, once again, John L. Bell, President and Founder of Spousal Strategies. We have been working with your team to really integrate and develop an equity framework to help guide this process. And at the core, the purpose of the Equity Framework is to really help equip Washington County to implement community engagement processes that lead to equitable long-range plans and ultimately equitable housing and transportation outcomes. It's a way for us to identify ways to address barriers that we know prevent historically marginalized groups from meaningful participation in public decision-making processes. And for us to really deepen decision-makers' understanding of who is considered an equity priority community based on previous county equity work. So we're building upon a lot of the work that you all already are doing, as well as relevant community-based research and ongoing data analysis. Next slide, please. So just a few of our desired outcomes, and I know we are short on time, so I'll just go through this pretty quickly. As for us to have equity priority communities, we'll have increased access to the decision-making process and meaningful influence on county policies. For the county's outreach and engagement efforts will help to build greater trust with equity priority communities, a better overall understanding of the impact that housing and transportation policies and decisions have on equity priority communities. Engagement with equity priority communities will help prevent, reduce potential harmful impacts and transparency in equity considerations during the process of making these decisions. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about our approach. We're working to incorporate an equity-focused community engagement framework. You'll see this in future weeks, both our equity framework as well as our equity-focused community engagement plan. Consider existing county engagement work. Rely on a variety of strategically chosen activities, presentations and events. And frankly, to create opportunities for recommendations to improve future engagement efforts. So those are some of the, the core elements that we're hoping to result in this process. Which incidentally, as we take a look around the region, is new for transportation effort. So I commend the board for taking, taking this step. Next slide, please. Again, our goals is to build trust and relationships with the community to create a better understanding of the community needs. We know that as Washington County continues to grow in both diversity as well as just across the board, we want to have a better understanding of what the, the community needs are. And for us to provide information and understanding about both the in-step as well as the middle housing processes and how the community can really influence the outcome. Next slide, please. So just a couple of measures, and we'll continue to refine this, particularly as we work with the community as well as, as we further refine the equity framework. But here are some of both the quantitative as well as qualitative measures that we think are important to track. I'll just list a few of them, one of which is number of registrations and participants for events, number of completed surveys, some of the qualitative measures, demographic analysis of survey respondents and those who register for the events. And of course, analysis of survey response and listening sessions feedback, including key takeaways and recommendations. So again, in the spirit of continuous improvement, as we sort of catalog the information from this process, really looking at the data such that we can have that influence the way in which we do these types of engagement efforts in the future. Next slide, please. And just in terms of next steps, December, as Erin indicated, we'll be working to finalize equity framework and engagement plan. We've already received a lot of great feedback from staff. We'll be initiating the work on project evaluation criteria and matrix. January is when our first phase of community engagement work will begin. And then, of course, in early twenty twenty-two, we'll be reviewing and discussion of project evaluation criteria matrix. And then having ongoing community group presentations as requested. So that is a lot of information in a short amount of time, but that's our general sense. Next slide. And I think we're going to seek any questions you all might have. So Erin, I'll turn it back over to you from here.
Thank you. So our policy questions for today is, first of all, do you have any questions about the WCCC member and city council briefing summary? And if you have any input as well about the format of how we've summarized those meetings, we'd accept that as well because we're going to be collecting a lot of input as we go through this process. And we'll be working on different ways to share that out with you. An important decision for today is to find out if you support the WCCC recommendation for the System of Countywide Interest map revisions and the eligibility criteria, because that will allow us to proceed on that. And then does your board support moving forward with this equity framework and engagement plan as John L. has outlined it? And we'll bring back more information to you again for your briefings over the next week and a half and for the January eleventh work session.
Commissioner Willie, you want to go first, given your timeframe?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going back in the slide presentation there because I like this. I think this is, I think this is great. You're doing a great job on this. And particularly, there was a part in here where you said, continue to prioritize the major streets. Historical prioritization. And so that made me, again, feel better about this process. I, I certainly think that that's where we need to be going. I like the other things that you've done so far. Doing the map and kind of updating the map. And now we're getting more community input on these things. So I, I like the direction that this is going and I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it. So good job on that. And thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Trese's thumbs up. Commissioner Rogers?
Just real quickly on the second question there. I, I didn't receive any real changes from what we've done before, but I understand that there's some pressure to do what I would call really municipal service work, the sidewalks and, and certain other street work other than roads of countywide significance. So I, I see that there were more than the seven that you approved. There are thirty-one. What I scanned of the thirty-one looked pretty much like countywide significant activities. Is there anything that's changing that we ought to know about? I mean, is there any emphasis on let's change the program and now make it a municipal service program? Or what, what do we have going there?
I think that what we've heard from these briefings has been, of course, support for finding a way to fund all of the needs that our communities have. And so we have heard support for things like ADA ramps and crossings and sidewalk infill, which oftentimes are things that we do as a part of our major streets projects. Anyway, we just don't tend to do them as small, one-off projects like that. So, you know, while we have heard that, we've also heard pretty clear support for keeping the focus on major streets and an understanding of how limited this particular funding source is and that it is the primary funding source for fixing county arterials and some of our larger collector facilities. So as a part of our proposed updates to the map, county staff are pretty conservative in what we recommended because we felt the direction from the board had been to keep that focus on major streets. And so the, the ones that we proposed, we thought met that criteria. And that's why we didn't recommend that all thirty-one be added to the map at this time.
And, and I might just add, I think, I think, you know, clearly we have different cities that are, have different priorities. And so I think what you're hearing is that mix of, of different priorities being expressed from the different communities.
Well, I'll jump in. I'm, I really appreciate the work that staff, WCCC TAC and our elected officials at WCCC have put in on the map of the roads of county significance. So I'm very satisfied with the results that your two questions, first two questions get to. The third question though, and why was, I looked at both my electronic files and I was trying to find, to see where I had it in paper form. I remember you're coming to us with the work program for this twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight process. And I'm really excited by what I hear about the equity framework and the elements of it as well as community engagement. Not only am I excited about what I've heard presented today, but because I believe it achieves what it is the board was looking for when it provided direction previously for more equitable outcomes. And in feedback back from the WCCC elected members, we heard some significant concerns. I won't label it as pushback, but there was really a lot of somewhat skepticism about what that meant. And more, I think of fear of the unknown than anything else. And I think what we're seeing presented today provides a clearer picture of what we were trying to get at, which I hope they'll have the benefit of seeing. And hence, my, the reason for my looking back to my files. From what I assume today is that we're seeing the information about the equity framework and criteria or elements and community engagement first. And that that will be going, I'm assuming though, because I don't think it's clear to me in the presentation. And I was hoping that the worksheet would point me back or reference me back to what packet date I should have looked at. You talked about the work plan on September twenty-first. Is that the one that would have the enumeration of what the work plan was? So I could see that this equity framework work will still be going through WCCC and WCCC TAC?
Yes. So that was laid out in our work plan, but I will say some of the dates have shifted. And so what we'd like to prepare in time for our individual briefings is an updated schedule so that you can see what we'll be talking about each month when we come back to you and come back to the WCCC. We will be taking this to the WCCC on Monday. John L. will be there as well, and he'll be covering the same information for them.
Wonderful. I'm very excited by what, what you're doing and what we're seeing and the possibilities that it will interest our various community members that we have not had the benefit of serving well previously. And that will at least have the benefit of more life experience and more possibilities, even if the decision-making in the end, after applying all of that, may be the same or not. But we don't know until we get there. So I'm really excited. Thank you very much. Any other Commissioner comments or thoughts? Commissioner Phi, anything you wanted to check in? Thumbs up before WCCC? Nope. Alrighty. Staff, I think we've covered all that you were hoping to.
Thank you very much. And we'll be back in January and we'll connect with you individually. We've had lots of ideas, suggestions for groups to meet with. We want to hear yours as well.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, um.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good job. So we were going to come back to leadership communication. I know we've lost Commissioner Willie already. I'm going to need to take off as well. Ms. Angie mentioned that she could give updates via email. Mr. Carr, Mr. Jockers, anything that you want to try and get before us today?
No, thank you.
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay. Any last items from commissioners for today?
Great meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, we certainly accomplished a lot today. And I know we'll have another action-packed one next Tuesday for the last meeting of the year. Terrific. Thanks for a great work session today, folks. We are adjourned. Thanks, Kevin.